All right, the time being ten o'clock, I'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Swenson.
Here.
Los.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Here. Do any of the commissioners have a reason to abstain for a financial or non-financial conflict of interest at this time?
No.
I do not.
No.
Yes, I would like to mention one thing. When my family moved here, we bought three quarters of land from Carl Schenk, and I just wanted to bring that up if any of the other commissioners feel that would be a conflict for me.
I do not, and I do not have any conflicts as well.
I have no reason to.
When was that?
Two thousand and seven, so it was twelve years ago.
Okay.
What was the dollar? Was it a significant amount, I suppose, three quarters?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, it was about seventeen hundred an acre. So I don't know if we need to vote on it, or it's general consensus.
Sherry, it's up to the commission if somebody wants to make a motion and second it. Thank you, Gary. It's up to the commission, I mean, they could vote, but it's up to them to make a motion and second it and then make a vote.
Do you feel you have a conflict because of that?
I do not feel it will influence my vote, but I certainly don't want it to hang over any decision that is made today.
Is there a motion on this?
I feel a little uncomfortable, but I'm not going to make a motion yet.
Well, if there's no motion on it, I guess we will say that that's fine. All right, next item on the agenda, item number four, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, I'm going to go over the format for the hearing appeals today. We're going to have ten minutes, and for the complainants to state their case. Now, this is a combined time for all those individuals who want to state that, so if there's more than one person who'd like to speak on it, that's a combined time. And that'll be followed by a twenty-minute rebuttal for the permit holders' case, followed by a twenty-minute complainant rebuttal, followed by a ten-minute permit holder rebuttal, and then thirty minutes for the Board of Adjustment to make the decision. Is everybody fine with the format?
Yes.
All right, same one we used before. I'd ask everybody while you're here, please, if you have a cellphone, turn it off, speak slowly if you're speaking at the microphone, and clearly, and when you come up, state your name for the record. Commissioner Los will be keeping the time, and are you going to give them a one-minute or five-minute?
Yeah, if it's a ten-minute window, I'll probably give you a two- or three-minute warning. Twenty-minute window, probably five-minute warning, just so you know how much you've got left.
Anything to add to that? All right. All right, next item on the agenda, item number five, public comment. No public comment. Right, this time I'll go ahead and close public comment, and we will wait for ten oh Entertained a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're now into Board of Adjustment. Next item on the agenda, item number six, appeal hearing for Mr. Josh Johnson. All right, at this time, we'll have a ten-minute complainant's case, so.
Mr. Chair, may I hear your point of order? At this time, I would like to introduce myself. I'm Brian Donahue, I'm an attorney from Sioux Falls, Donahue Law Firm, and I represent the appellant here in this hearing, Joshua Johnson.
Okay, you're going to have your time, I'm sticking to this format, so when we get --
I need to make a motion, or I should say, excuse me, I need to make a point of order and an objection as to Mr. Swenson.
You can do that at your time.
I'm sorry, but I need to do it before any proceedings go forward in this matter, because if he is hearing the issues from the complainant, he will already have been participating in this process. I've talked to Mr. Clemish about this, your state's attorney, and it would be appropriate at this time for me to make an objection.
Rob, what is, what is your opinion on this?
I need to see if you can make a motion. Thank you, Gary. My opinion, he can --
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give you five minutes.
I won't need that. Mr. Swenson has been very active on social media and has made statements, including those showing clear animus against concentrated animal feeding operations or other animal feeding operations in this county. He has made comments on social media which have led to concerns about incitement of violence that were significant enough that my client, Joshua Johnson, his wife, and others have formally filed a complaint with the Yankton County Sheriff. These threats, to the point of requiring a sheriff's report, along with consistent statements attacking the construction of my client and others as being without valid permits or without any permits, or otherwise leading to a potential for people to die, is a clear indication of either actual bias or an unacceptable risk of actual bias or prejudgment in this case. And I would cite to the matter Drainage Permit Number eleven-eight-eighty-one, excuse me, two thousand and nineteen, South Dakota Three, Paragraph thirty-eight. I'd also state on the record that the Yankton County zoning ordinance does not have a provision for an alternate for Board of Adjustment members that is authorized under statute, just doesn't have any provision in the existing county ordinance here for an alternate. So I'm not sure if any other members of the board would have any reason to feel that they would likewise have actual bias or prejudgment in this case, but if we have less than the appropriate number for the vote here, which under your ordinance requires four out of the five members, we will continue to raise this objection and withhold that that objection should apply, because the ordinance as written would be unconstitutional in denying my clients their due process rights. So with that, we'd ask Mr. Swenson to recuse or abstain.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for ten minutes for the complainant's case.
Excuse me, just as an opportunity, I don't think Mr. Swenson --
Okay, I don't recognize you at this time. I'm running this meeting. All right, it's time for the complainant's case. I appreciate your concern, and you can stay that at that time.
I need to make my subsequent objection. Mr. Swenson didn't respond, nor did he have an opportunity to consult with counsel. I don't think it was appropriate for the chair to move that quickly. I will object if Mr. Swenson does not affirmatively state whether he will recuse himself or not.
Mr. State's Attorney, would you advise us on this point?
I would believe it's up to Gary to respond, and then up to the commission to address if the commission makes a motion and determines whether he needs to be recused from himself or abstain. So I do agree Gary should state affirmatively or state that he is not intending to recuse himself or abstain.
What was your name, attorney?
It's Brian Donahue, D-O-N-A-H-O-E.
Are you on the agenda for this?
I am. I represent Joshua Johnson.
No, I mean, for, with, according to myself as commissioner, are you on the agenda? I'd like it if the audience would please keep their voices down. Thank you very much.
Yes, this is part of the Board of Adjustment appeal of Joshua Johnson's --
I don't, I don't see you and my name on the agenda.
Mr. Swenson, if you want to raise that as a legal issue, you should talk to your state's attorney, but it's appropriate at this time for --
I don't talk to him, I've got my own attorney from another state.
Fantastic. Then I assume you've been properly advised that the --
That's none of your business. And I'm not on the agenda.
As part of this proceeding, it's appropriate to raise the objection and to have you respond. If you'd like to respond, we would appreciate that.
I'm not on the agenda. What would you be, what was your, is your advice, Mr. State's Attorney?
Then I would let the commission discuss on what there's anything you guys want to do as a commission, and if you want to make a motion and have it recused. It's up to you.
Is there a motion from anyone on the commission? Being no motion?
I'd like some discussion. What's, what's the groundwork on this, Rob, as far as when somebody is biased beyond their apparent ability to make a logical decision?
It could upset the decision-making of the board if the individual is coming in with preconceived biased decisions and not looking at the facts before the individual here today. It could be, excuse me, it could be concerning.
I'd make a motion then that Mr. Swenson isn't recusing himself. If that's a proper motion.
Because of perceived bias, or?
Perceived bias.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I guess for further discussion, I'd like to say, you know, Mr. Ray Epp, when he was on this board and his association with the Port Council, I guess that wasn't determined to be a conflict of interest as well as, you know, involvement in bankings and loans and things like that, so if we're going to start doing that, you know, I think we could look back too and, and see maybe when this was initially approved, was Mr. Epp's association with the Port Council, would that be biased? I would certainly think it would be as well.
You know, I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate the concern, and I, my concern for future, I guess, is similar to what you had said is, you know, I could probably be considered a pro ethanol person, I, you know, speak in favor of ethanol, I burn ethanol. If an ethanol plant is in front of us someday, am I going to have to recuse myself because of that? That's, that would be my concern, or similar situation.
I built them.
So at what point does a bias become?
What, what you're saying is, is no different than me being a member of the Boys and Girls Club Advisory Council.
Sure.
That I should recuse myself from everything. I think there's a difference between that and the things that's gone on the public media that Mr. Swenson's been promoting.
I guess I'd like to say something, that Mr. Don Kettering, farm credit for decades, First Dakota National Bank, and they both make farm loans, that's a little different than the Boys and Girls Club. You want to, you want to argue about this all day, I don't know how much, how many Schedule Fs you filled out, I don't think you farmed. I did. I farmed for umpteen, many years, plus I work full-time. I lived out there with all these people, I know them all. I know the Johnsons, the Schenks, the Cutzes. I grew up here in Yankton County. You didn't, you came from a different county. Sherry Los came from a different county. So I guess I don't understand it either, if you want to throw stuff, you're on the liaison for the, for the Highway Department, and I don't think you've ever driven a truck with a Class A CDL, or Sherry's been an engineer, but I don't know what your degrees are, you got masters and PhDs, but I don't think you ever operated a backhoe, a dozer, or snowplow, or combines, or anything like I ever lived out here in Yankton County either. So I don't, you know, because I run a combine, does that mean that I can't vote on somebody that's farmed or, or farmed myself? So I guess I, I have a little problem with, with you being on the YAPG too, and be a member of that, so I guess maybe, maybe several of us shouldn't vote at all, including you and Sherry Los, and so that's, that's up to you, Mr. Banker and --
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
And, I mean, I, I do acknowledge that some of the stuff has been different, but that's my question, is where, at what, where, how do we distinguish that down the road?
Rob defined that at a previous meeting when he identified what a conflict of interest was. Did you not?
I did, it's in the statute.
Yeah, we discussed conflict of interest.
I did, it's in that statute.
Right.
And then now where you're at too, Joe, is part of that statute allows you as a board to determine if you believe there is an issue regarding one of the other commissioners, and that's where you're at right now.
Right.
Making that decision, and whether his decision is based on arbitrary and capricious is where the definition would be.
Don, you and I are old, and just because you're back in the Pony Express and the Telegraph era, we have new things called social media, Twitter, and cellphones, and Facebook, and all kinds of other things, so you need to step up, because this is the future, the newspapers are dying.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Rob, do I ask for Gary's vote?
Everybody votes.
Kettering?
Oh, let's, let's clarify the motion. Your motion was to have Gary recuse himself for a conflict of interest, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Gary, do you feel you can make an unbiased decision today on this matter?
I can, because I, like I said, I know all these people, I probably know them better than anybody on this commission. I know the situations, I know the county. I grew, I was born and raised in Yankton County. I know the people, the people know me, and I get input from people every day, almost, not by news, telephone, face-to-face, and I try to make my judgments clearly. I'm, commissioners are responsible for, for the safety of the people and the property of Yankton County. That comes first. This is still a republic where the majority rules. It's not a democracy, it's a republic, and Yankton County has been a pristine county for decades. My family's been farmers since eighteen ninety-seven, so I feel that I can make it a clear and honest, because the safety of water and air quality are above hogs that don't even belong to these people, they belong to somebody else.
All right, I have a, any, is there any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Los?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Clemish?
No. All right, I guess at this time, Gary, was that two-thirds?
Not just majority?
Just the majority. I guess the majority voted that you have a --
Okay. Do you want me to go out in the hallway?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for the ten minutes for the complainant's case. This is a combined time for all complainants. So if there's anybody, a complainant, they'd like to come up and make their case, now would
Good morning, my name is Phil Tau from Gayville. On December fourth of two thousand and eighteen, a CUP for a twenty-four-hundred-head hog finishing confinement was granted to Mr. Joshua Johnson. On December eleventh, a few days later, the building permit was issued. That building permit and the accompanying CUP expired one hundred and eighty days from December eleventh on June ninth of this year. A request for zoning enforcement was submitted on July third, with others submitted later that month, due to no visible constructed, construction performed before expiration of Building Permit three-four-thirty. As of July nineteenth, only a small hole had been dug with some concrete in it, and unattached stairs were placed nearby on the site. By November seventeenth, the pit and walls were nearly completed. These are the facts of the dates concerned in this case. Section seventeen-twenty-five of our ordinance, quote, "The building permit shall expire if the work described in any building permit, conditional use or variance, has not begun within one hundred and eighty days from the date of issuance. The building permit shall also expire if the work described in any building permit, conditional use or variance, has not been completed within two years of the date, from the date of issuance." Section twenty-three-oh-three, "In case any building or structure is erected, constructed, reconstructed, altered, repaired, converted, or maintained, or any building, structure, or land is used in violation of this ordinance, the zoning administrator or designee, as determined by the county commission, may institute any appropriate action or proceedings to prevent such unlawful erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, conversion, maintenance, or use, to restrain, correct, or abate such violation, to prevent the occupancy of said building, structure, or land, or to prevent any illegal act, conduct, business, or use in or about the premises. On May fourteenth of this year, two thousand and nineteen, a planning-commission meeting was held, and nearly, and a nearly twenty-minute discussion regarding extensions was had by the members. Many citizens were in attendance. Mr. John Guderson, Mr. Louis Johnson, Joshua's father, and Mr. and Mrs. Schenk were in attendance. Mr. McGinnis opened the discussion in an hour and fifty-seven minutes and eight seconds with the following statement, "Conditional use in building permit extensions. More importantly, has the county given them, and if so, how? Because there is nothing in your ordinance that will allow it to happen." Further statements regarding the need, to the need for the applicant to apply was made by the commission, members, and temporary zoning administrator. A lawsuit in Hanson County was recalled by Mr. McGinnis's personal experience for a dairy CUP that was granted an extension. It was appealed to the courts and lost based on the fact that the ordinance does not allow for extensions to be granted. These same discussions were again had by the planning-commission on June eleventh and July ninth, and by the county commissioners on June fourth and June eighteenth. The conclusions were always the same, extensions are not permissible, reapply, reapplication is a remedy, come to the office and make a plan. Ladies and gentlemen, the facts are clear, they had plenty of reason to know the proper course of action, and yet none of the operators took corrective actions. I believe this was an intentional move, meant to show complete disregard for this county and the, and this board in particular. This contentious, this contentious situation we are all in is a result of their actions, not of those who sought enforcement.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Mitch Peterson, I'm an attorney from Sioux Falls, I represent the complainants in this case. Before addressing briefly the substance, there's an important procedural issue. The zoning administrator made a determination that the permits were expired. Mr. Johnson, and then later, Mr. Schenk appealed that to this board, under section nineteen-oh-three. Under section nineteen, nineteen-oh-three-point-three, "The applicant or any other person aggrieved by the decision of the zoning administrator or planning commission shall file a written appeal in the zoning administrator, with the zoning administrator, within five working days of the decision." Five working days. The notice of expiration went out on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, according to Mr. Better's letter, which was acknowledged in Mr. Donahue's appeal letter, is on October twenty-fourth, that's Thursday, we count here, the day of doesn't count. Twenty-fifth Friday is a day. Saturday and Sunday don't count. So that would be twenty-seven, excuse me, the twenty-fifth counts, twenty-six and twenty-seventh do not, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, thirty-first. Five working days from October twenty-fourth notice is October thirty-one. That is the absolute deadline to file a written appeal. That didn't happen, it was a day late, and that matters jurisdictionally and for this board's authority. The appeal was filed six working days, or eight calendar days after it. It does not run from the applicant's receipt, it runs from the date of the decision according to this, and according to Judge Tammy Byrne, who dismissed one of the complainant's cases over in Yankton County earlier. That decision here, I only have one copy. Mr. Clemish, should I present this?
Yes, I'll take that, it's the same. Thank you.
One day late deprives this board of jurisdiction and authority, even, even if there was something to the appeal, and there aren't for the merits that Mr. Tau requested. The appeal should be immediately dismissed, you don't even need to get into the substance of what it means to begin work, did they do it, and get into that messiness. In fact, you don't have the authority to under the ordinances, because the applicant made the appeal a day late, and that is absolutely fatal. That's a case to which Mr. Schenk was a party, they're fully aware of that requirement, and they missed the deadline. Ms. Los, how much time is remaining?
Three-thirty.
Thank you. If this board gets to the merits, it's pretty clear that what it means to begin work is, requires some interpretation and some application of the facts to that interpretation. Whatever you decide, the court will defer to your decision on what the ordinance means and whether the facts meet that. The South Dakota statute is eleven-dash-two-dashsixty-one-point-one. There's a high level of deference, and I'm telling you, if you say, you know what, what it means to do work is actually do some work out on the property, don't be just ordering things and trying to get things lined up, why, that's why there's a hundred-and-eighty-day window. Not to finish, but start excavation, start actually pouring some footings, start actually getting the work done. Otherwise, why'd you come in and get a permit? They get to choose when they apply, and that triggers an obligation to actually begin work. The zoning administrator investigated this thoroughly and made a determination that they did not begin work. There's insufficient evidence to overturn that decision in this case. They simply need to reapply. Thank you. That decision is your decision about what it means to begin work and whether Mr. Johnson actually began work, is something that's not going to be overturned by a court. So you can decide they simply didn't start the work in time, and that's all you got to do. Put that in the record, find that Mr. Better was the zoning administrator, and finally find that, that you lack authority anyway, because they missed their deadline. They didn't do their work on time, and they need to start the process over. For those reasons, the zoning administrator's decision should be affirmed, and this appeal should be dismissed.
Thank you.
There's about one and a half minutes left.
Anybody like to speak for the remaining time? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go ahead and close that ten minutes for the complainant's case, and now we'll move on to the twenty minutes for the permit holders' case. Anybody here like to speak for the permit holder? Come on up, sir, state your name for the record. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm Brian Donahue from Donahue Law Firm in Sioux Falls. I represent Joshua Johnson in this matter. We did have correspondence with the zoning office prior to the October twenty-fourth letter, and also with this body, either as the Board of Adjustment or through the state's attorney, to address matters for the Board of Adjustment or the county commission. I just want to do a couple of quick things for housekeeping, so to speak, and then I will address the arguments of the complainants. I want to, first of all, start off by saying that unlike the previous presentation that you had from the Gunderson G.J., or G.H.J., G.H., G.A.S. Farms, excuse me, I'm not going to give you individual reminders, we did look at the packets that were online for the body for these proceedings, and you've got perhaps more than what we would have pointed out in regard to most things, we have a few things that are not there. So what we did was, rather than give you more paper, we're simply going to highlight a few things very quickly, I don't think we're going to need to get into a lot of the details on this particular matter, but I put a number of what we call a bait stamp or a number on each page for a set of what we will call our record, which I would like to provide to the auditor to make our record here, and then I'll refer to those things that you would have in your packet. If you don't have something in your packet because it's additional, we'll make reference to it and tell you where to find it, and you should be able to locate it fairly quickly. So with the chair's permission, I'll just hand this to the auditor. We heard a lot from the complainants here about interpretation of the ordinance, first we were told that there cannot be an extension of the -- First, we were told that there cannot be an extension of the provisions for a building permit. It has to be a renewal. Then we were told by an attorney representing the complainants that you can interpret the ordinance, and whatever you say goes, and what the courts will then decide is whether you acted reasonably. If you have, then whatever interpretation you make is going to be upheld. Well, if that's the case, then we need to look at section seventeen twenty-five because in correspondence that had been provided prior to the decision or determination in this case, we pointed out that the online version of seventeen twenty-five just talks about a building permit. It doesn't talk about the conditional use permit expiring. And what it says is that if work isn't commenced on the building permit or the other things, and again, that's work, not actual construction, but when that doesn't take place within a hundred and eighty days, then the building permit will expire. And then it tells you in seventeen twenty-five, the remedy is to come and get a renewed permit without having to pay additional fees. Here, the CUP or conditional use permit is not at issue then. So if the Board of Adjustment or county commission undertook the review, which they said they did and confirmed in February, of the Yankton County zoning ordinance and said that it was finalized and that the online version was correct, then obviously, we're only dealing with the building permit here. So I'm going to address that rather than looking at the conditional use permit. And there's a reason for that. Conditional use permits provide a government permit or permission for a land use, and that is then a vested property right for the landowner who's obtained a favorable verdict or decision from this board to allow that permit and then the land use. To take that away simply on the basis of expiration would be inappropriate under the law, but also in looking at some cases from other states where this has been addressed, it would appear that the intent or purpose for that type of a provision is to ensure that somebody doesn't lock up some land by getting a permit on it and then sit and not do anything to develop it while changes may take place around that piece of property and then resulting in some kind of a conflict later when they go to build that use that has now been years or several months past the initial permit being authorized. That's not this case. We had an unusual set of circumstances here that prevented the construction from actually starting when most people would have expected it to, when these permits were obtained back in December of 2018. So in looking at that, we would look at an intent to continue with that land use. What was the good faith or what was the intention of the permit holder in this particular situation? Now, section seventeen twenty-five only requires commencement of work, as I said before. That is important. If you look at the building permit that was obtained by Mr. Johnson, down in the lower left-hand corner, it says, "If the work or construction is not commenced." It says, quote, "This permit will expire if work or construction authorized is not commenced within one hundred and eighty days, or construction is not substantially completed within two years of issuance." They use the word construction twice, work once. There's a conjunctive or, OR, not an and. Clearly, the intent here is to make a distinction. And what does the term work mean? Well, in the construction realm and in zoning, typically work is a defined term. In this particular instance, it's not defined in your ordinance. The term actual construction is. It's not in the section that we're talking about. It's in a completely different section, and so the drafters of the ordinance knew how to define that. They knew how to make it referable or put it into another section if they wanted to. They didn't. The term work often in construction is distinguished from the statement of the work or the scope of the work. Scope of the work is a subcategory of the statement of the work, and if you're looking at the overall project, especially in design, build, what you may have is the entirety of everything that needs to be done. That will include design. That will include planning. That will include government permits. In this particular instance, these are less than a thousand annual units, therefore the state general permit is not required. So that part of the government approvals wasn't necessary, but other things would have to be done in addition to just ordering supplies, ordering contractors or other things. But all those things did take place, and we'll talk about that briefly here in a moment. But when we're talking about distinction between work or construction, it's clear that the intention is to be broader than construction when we're using that term work. And in this particular instance, the ordinance is very clear in regard to how it should be interpreted, in my opinion, and if we were to look at something different other than the version of section seventeen twenty-five that's online currently for this county, it's clear that there would be, you'd have to make some kind of a decision that something has changed or that there's a way for this to be determined not to apply in the language that you have here today. What I mean by that is, we've also raised the issue separately and in this particular instance of the fact that it does now appear that the 2006 amendments to the zoning ordinance do not contain any evidence of a planning commission public hearing notice being published. It needs to be published in a legal newspaper at least ten days prior to that hearing under the statutes. If that's not done, then the law says that the amendment version is not validly enacted, and that means it's void, void from the beginning. I can't tell you how much producers and livestock owners or those who do the concentrated animal feeding operation permits like Mr. Johnson hate uncertainty. We don't want to attack things like this from years ago. However, I was the attorney that was on the North Hill Farms case that we've cited to this body in a letter November fourteenth. Same type of situation there as I think what we may have had here in a rush to try to get something done before things may change on his own ordinance. Cutting to the chase, in 2006, there wasn't a planning commission public hearing notice. That seems to be very clear. Why that matters here is because if that was the case and the statute is then void, or I should say, the amendment to the ordinance is void, then there's only a building permit required here. It's a permitted use, and we could stop wasting a lot of time, energy, and money in addressing these things if we simply allowed for Mr. Johnson to get a new building permit. The facts here indicate that Mr. Johnson did, in fact, attempt to go forward with the construction within a hundred and eighty days, and when that was forwarded by impracticality and impossibility due to weather and the ground conditions, he then turned around on June fifth and tried to get an application for a new building permit or an extension. He submitted that. That's in your records. Acting zoning administrator, Brian McGinnis, declined, and he put a note on there pending six eighteen nineteen CC meeting, which is county commission meeting. Then after the county commission meeting, nobody came back to Mr. Johnson and said, okay, this has been decided and you need to get a new building permit for this. What happened instead was a period of time in which there were discussions had, changes were made. Eventually, on October one, the county commission delegated authority to the planning commission to decide these issues. The planning commission met on October fourth. It was our understanding that they made a determination based on that delegation of authority in regard to Mr. Johnson's permit. That was on a Friday. The subsequent Monday, there was a motion or a suggestion that there should be a reconsideration of that decision. Subsequent to that, to our knowledge, nothing further happened with the planning commission. To our knowledge, nothing further happened with the county commission in rescinding or taking back their delegated authority to the planning commission. But on October twenty-fourth, according to the date of the letter, Mr. Gary Better, who had recently been hired on October twenty-first, issued a determination, apparently in the role of a zoning administrator, although that's not his title, and sent out letters to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Schenk, and others. Now, there's been an argument that there's a hard and fast rule in regard to this, this body's jurisdiction. I would posit that instead, your decision on how to interpret the ordinance, just like what Mr. Peterson was arguing to you, you have the right to interpret that in a way that provides that you do have jurisdiction over this appeal. And the reason for that is simple. Mr. Johnson made an effort to get authority for this particular building permit. He asked for it, was never told, you specifically have to go through this process. I know there was a public notice that people could seek to have this dealt with. Mr. Johnson thought he had on June fifth. Furthermore, the October twenty-fourth notice was sent by regular mail. I wrote a letter on October twenty-fifth, which is, which is in your packet. I had no idea that that October twenty-fourth letter had gone out. That's when I was formally providing information to the county that I was representing Mr. Johnson on this matter and that we had certain objections or concerns about the way that the process was being handled. Not a single one of my letters has ever been answered, including the November fourteenth letter that I wrote to the board raising issues about concerns relating to Mr. Swenson's characterization of my clients. These issues I've just talked about in regard to delegation of authority to the planning commission, then taking away that authority, that's never been addressed. More importantly, there were opponents to my clients who were allowed to be heard and read statements into the record on November fifteenth. My letter was in the packets for the board, but was never mentioned. That raised a lot of concerns for us. But the reason why I talk about all this is because the lack of communication here provides for a basis to decide that this board and the county has not provided a sufficient notice to Mr. Johnson, and therefore, if there is any delay in his decision and then notice of an appeal, that's not going to take away your jurisdiction. You can interpret your ordinance to say that this is appropriate and you have jurisdiction. Now, filing the written appeal within five business days is also going to be null and void if the, the conditional use permit provisions don't apply, because there would be no need for that. If we want to go back to the original intent here, again, as I said, the intent is to ensure that you don't sit on a piece of property with a permit and not do anything to develop it. Mr. Johnson was not doing that. He was pursuing this. The weather and other conditions didn't cooperate. Roads were closed, but the, the clear evidence here shows that he did, in fact, in mid to late May, have Louis Johnson out with a bulldozer, and he did do work out there. He removed some of the sod and, and the topsoil. Then later, CC Holling came out with an excavator and tried to get some work done, but it was too wet. They did start digging for the pits. Complaints talked about that. There was some work done. They had to stop, but they put out a pig on June first. Why did they do that? It wasn't because they were being in some way disrespectful to this body or to the county. They did that because they're trying to establish the, the land use that they had a permit for, and you're not going to bring a whole bunch of pigs out there. You're not going to have twenty-four hundred pigs out on an open lot in that type of situation. For one thing, how are you going to haul them there? The roads are closed. You just can't do it. You can't get the dozer or a scraper in. You're not going to put a bunch of pigs out there. They added some other pigs. They had five pigs out there, some electricity and a shed. We'll be the first to admit, that's not supposed to be a permanent construction. It is supposed to be our exercise of an attempt to use the land in the way it was permitted. That would have all been done prior to the conditional use permit expiring, if that's ever going to be considered. And at the same time, on, on June third, then a significant order is placed and materials are shipped out, and we've provided that set of records in your packet, which you also have in the binder that I provided. They did build steps. They poured concrete on June eighth, and sent photos of Brian McGinnis on June ninth showing the work that had been done. Now, the building permit would have technically expired on Sunday, June eighth. On June ninth, we have those photographs being sent to Brian McGinnis, showing that work has been done.
Do you have those, or do you have a reference to those in your, in the packet? Those photos?
Those photos are not in the packet, other than if they're attached to, well, I'm going to lose my timer. If you don't mind, I, I don't believe they are physically in the packet, but I will have Mr. Johnson just affirm that he did send those and that Mr. McGinnis did acknowledge them. I'll also have him affirm that in regard to the other statements that I've made here about the work being done prior to June ninth, that those are accurate. There was a letter from Mr. McGinnis that was issued on a date of July second, twenty-sixth of 2019 about the complaints, and there was a response, which you got from June thirtieth, trying to reach Mr. McGinnis prior to the June, excuse me, July thirty-first deadline that had been set in that letter. Additional work and other things happened, and then we get into the whole situation in October, which brings us here today. I'm going to skip over some of those details about what work actually went on there because I, I think that's not important. What's important is that he did make an effort to do those things. He did make an effort within the time that would have logically applied for the conditions that he encountered. The law does not require that a permit holder meet a deadline when it's impossible or impractical to do so. That's the common law. It's not in your ordinance, but it applies automatically without the need for an extension. The flip side of that coin is, just like in contracts, if the object or the requirements in that particular contract, especially for personal services, become impossible, then the law does not require that that contract be performed.
Mr. Donahue, how would one know that common law states that if it's impractical to do something, then the timeframes are null and void or don't exist?
Yep, three minutes.
Thank you. You consult with the state's attorney in regard to its application, in regard to whether it's impractical or impossible. That's a reasonable person standard. Would a reasonable person be able to perform? And if a reasonable person, for reasons beyond their control, is not able to do so, then it becomes impractical. That's the circumstance that we think that Mr. Johnson faced in this situation. With that, given the limited time that I had, I would just simply state that your decision does have to be one of interpretation. We think it would be appropriate to reverse the decision in this regard and allow Mr. Johnson to go forward in regard to those things I said I would have him affirm. I just ask the, the party, Mr. Johnson himself, to step up here, and I'll ask him a few questions to run through that. Mr. Johnson, just state your name for the record, please.
Josh Johnson.
And are you the Joshua Johnson with the building permit number three, four, three, zero?
Yes.
And did you hear and understand the things that I stated previously in regard to the facts in this matter?
Yes.
And did I state those facts correctly?
Yes.
And did those things actually happen?
Yes.
Did you send Brian McGinnis photographs of the work that was done on your site on, on or about June ninth?
Yes.
Okay. And prior to that, had you communicated with him, especially in regard to the June fifth submission, in an attempt to meet the requirements for commencement of work within one hundred and eighty days on the permit?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd want to tell the body here? It's all reasonable. Thank you.
Much time's left?
There's a minute fifteen.
Would anyone else like to speak for the remaining amount of time for the permit holders' case? Got a, how much time?
We've got about a minute, Ray.
My name is Ray Up. I'm an ordinary, average person, I believe. Does the, does the zoning have a definition implied in there for construction? So what I did at home is I looked in the American Heritage Dictionary, and construction definition, the act or process of constructing, the condition of being constructed, the way of which something is put together. So in those regards, construction, since we have two engineers here who built ethanol plants, part of the construction aspect in work, because that was your job, was working, you got paid for that one, was blueprinting. And what, and what hap-
Time's up, sir. If we give you more time, we'll have to give everybody else more time. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next part, twenty-minute for complainant rebuttal.
I'm going to try to hit on some of the points and not be too repetitive. First point about the validity of the ordinances, there's an assertion that the 2006 version of the ordinances had some procedural hiccup in their adoption back in 2006. This isn't the time or place to decide that. As of right now, the ordinances as they sit are the ones that are in place. It's incumbent upon Mr. Johnson or whoever else believes they're improper to take the appropriate action, but until a court rules and tells you the ordinances aren't valid, you should apply the ordinances that are in place right now. Regarding the definition of, of work, I think both sides are in agreement here that how you define work and- you define work and how you apply the various facts that have been presented to determine whether that definition has been met or not within the time frame allowed is entirely your decision. It'd be similar to an NFL review, when there's a call on the field, there needs to be a high level of evidence, indisputable video evidence or whatever the standard is this year, to overturn that. So, as long as your decision has something to support it, that's good enough. So, that is entirely within, in your discretion to make that determination. Additionally, I would note that it is your prerogative as well, and within your power, assuming you have jurisdiction on the time limit issue, which I'll touch on, assuming we're here at a proper time, it's within your power to determine whether the work is genuine, or was it just some feeble attempt to try to play games and make sure that they met their deadline? In a case Mr. Donahue and I had up in Brookings, South Dakota, there was an application for a conditional use permit, there needed to be a setback from a variety of things like houses and rivers, and one thing was a private well. And there was a well that was out of use for a number of years and not on the well registry within the setback. Some of the landowners got that well working again before the Board was to make its decision about whether all the setbacks were met, they showed up with evidence at the hearing, a video of the well literally pumping water, and the Board up in Brookings decided that might literally be pumping water, but that's just a sham to try to mess up the setbacks and get in the way of this project, it's not a genuine well. And the Circuit Court on appeal upheld that. They said that is a legitimate decision, a factually supported decision the Board can make. You can look at the genuineness of the efforts, and I would say that it is up to you to decide whether quickly throwing one pig out there to try to say they're using the property, which I believe happened after it was expired anyway, after June 2nd, but is throwing one pig out there really genuine work as described in the permit? The work described in the permit here was the construction of a 2,400-head facility, finishing barn, and then using that for 2,400-head. The fact that they threw one pig out there, I think, is a pretty telling admission that they were aware of their deadline and knew they weren't hitting it. So, let's try to play some games to try to, you know, pull the wool over everybody's eyes and keep their permit alive. I think that's a telling admission. I also think it's a telling admission that before the zoning administrator made the decision that their permits were expired, they tried to get an extension, and were making inquiries to get an extension. I think that, as well, is an admission that they knew their permits were expired and they were trying to do something about it. And I think the facts are also important, that 180 days from issuance of the conditional use permit is June 2nd of 2019. If you note that the day that a significant order for materials was placed, according to the testimony from the applicant, was the next day, it was June 3rd. That significant order for materials, even if that is work, didn't happen until 181 days after issuance of the conditional use permit, and these pictures of site work that were going on on June 9th, that's a week after, that's 187 days after issuance of the conditional use permit. So, even by their own facts, in a light most favorable to them, to which they're not entitled to that, but even if you want to give them every benefit of the doubt, they didn't meet their deadline. They know they didn't meet their deadline. That's why they threw a pig out there. It's not enough, and you have the power to say, "That's not enough. That's not actually commencing work." Work is certainly broader than construction, but it's up to you to decide whether merely preparing to work or ordering some stuff is even enough. That's entirely your discretion to make that decision in whether, in deciding whether to overturn and reverse your zoning administrator, who took a close, hard look at all of the details that are in the binder presented by the applicant in this case. Addressing this issue of impossibility or impracticability, that is a common law concept as it applies to private contracts between party A and party B. For example, if I hire a painter to come and do some interior painting at my house, and he shows up with his roller and his bucket of paint and his ladder to do the work, and I won't answer my door, I won't unlock my door, I won't let him in the house, I can't sue him for not painting my house because I made it impossible for him to do that. That concept doesn't apply here, and it also doesn't apply to zoning regulations, it doesn't apply to your ordinances. That's a, it's a creature of contract law. It has nothing to do with zoning and whether they have complied with their permit. Additionally, you know, if a party himself has created the time crunch problem, that the situation is becoming impossible or impractical or very difficult for him to do, maybe he shouldn't wait until day 175, or 179, or 182, or whatever day it was. It's six months to just get an honest, honest effort to do the work for which the permits were issued, and they didn't do it. More importantly, this Board doesn't need to wrestle with that hard decision, you can simply find the appeal is untimely. They filed it six working days, eight calendar days after issuance of the decision. The trigger is not when they receive it, the trigger is not when they have notice of it. My clients argued that to Judge Byrne, to say, you know, when they went to ask Mr. Garrity whether any permits have been issued, he said, "No, and there was something sitting in his desk where the permit had been issued," and he wasn't straight with my clients. So, they didn't even have actual notice, and there was efforts to obscure that information by Mr. Garrity. And that wasn't enough. The Court said, "When the decision is made is when the five working days starts to run," because that's exactly what the ordinance says. You can't interpret your way around that. There's no discretion to ignore that, it is absolutely clear. And I'll read from Judge Byrne's decision here into the record regarding Section 1903. She quotes it, it's five working days from the decision. And here, they're summarizing my client's argument in that case. Petitioner's complaint is the zoning administrator's determination that a conditional use permit was not necessary for Johnson's use of the property. So, you're complaining, Mr. Garrity, when he issued the building permit, said, "You don't need a conditional use permit." My clients ultimately then appealed that. It quotes as that determination, Mr. Garrity's determination, that we're appealing in court, that determination was made at the time he issued the building permit, as documented by his entry on the permit. The time for appeal of that decision commenced then. It's not from when the party appealing learns of it, not when they should have known, it's when the decision is made. I'll continue. Pursuant to the provisions of its ordinance, the Board declined to consider petitioner's appeal because of its untimeliness. It was correct to do so. The Board, and by extension this Court, lacks jurisdiction to consider the matter. Petitioners have no legal right to the performance requested that the Board impose CUP process, because the Board lost jurisdiction to consider the same when the appeal was not perfected as required by the zoning ordinance. This county was party to that case. Mr. Schenk was a party to that case. Mr. Donahue represents Mr. Johnson, was the attorney on this case. Additionally, the October 24th letter from Mr. Better was actually received by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Schenk's counsel on October 28th. There was still time, there were three days to get the appeal filed, and it was not done. If you look at the actual appeal notice letter, November 1, quoting from the language from Mr. Johnson's counsel, it says, "Thank you for a copy of your letter to my client, Joshua Johnson, dated October 24, 2019. We are concerned by the outcome, but hope to resolve this matter and avoid the expense and time of appeal. If not, we need to start the appeal process." That's an admission, the appeal process wasn't started as of the date of this letter, November 1. And on the very last page of the letter, it says, "Finally, please consider this as notice of intent to appeal under Section 1903 of the zoning ordinance, if applicable." There's a complaint that Mr. Johnson wasn't told by you or by the zoning administrator or other folks in the planning and zoning office what to do. They didn't educate him enough. That's not the county's responsibility. It's not the county's responsibility to do that. The ordinances have very clear timeframes. Mr. Johnson had notice of the decision, actual receipt of the decision, his attorney had actual receipt of the decision, when there was still time to act. And the appeal actually quotes the very Section 1903 that imposes the five-business-day or five-working-day deadline. They didn't meet it. They're a day late. This Board accordingly does not have jurisdiction or authority and can dispose of this appeal quite quickly for that reason. Whether it's procedural or substantive, we encourage the Board to uphold the decision of the zoning administrator and deny the appeal request made by Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time is left?
There's eight minutes and 40 seconds.
Eight minutes roughly left. Anyone else care to speak on complainant rebuttal? Right, seeing our hearing done, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and go on to the 10-minute permit holder rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I need to correct something Mr. Peterson said. I was not an attorney at all in the case that he's talking about, in which Judge Byrne made the decision regarding the timeliness of an appeal under Section 1903. And furthermore, that's a completely different situation than what was presented here. The issue of the timeliness was brought up to the Board, just like Mr. Peterson did today in that case, and this Board decided that it was untimely. So, the allegations made about Mr. Garrity, the zoning administrator at the time, concealing or not being forthcoming in a sufficient way to provide enough notice so that the complainants could bring their appeal, is different from the situation that we have here, and that's why I brought up the whole issue about delegation of authority, October 1, County Commission to the Planning Commission, October 4, meeting of the Planning Commission, determinations made, record made. Next Monday, October 8, suggestion that there was something wrong, information was not sufficiently provided in regard to all the packets, Planning Commission then should perhaps reconsider. No motion to reconsider, no further action taken. No subsequent County Commission or Planning Commission, according to the minutes I've reviewed, addressed those issues. Then, out of the blue, without Joshua Johnson knowing anything about it, Mr. Better was hired October 21 and issued the October 24 letter. I don't know when that was sent out. What I do know is that the letter itself says, "You have five business days from receipt of this letter." If Mr. Better, as a new employee, made a mistake and didn't set forth the appropriate language or didn't interpret Section 1903 correctly, that's one thing. But for Mr. Johnson to not even know that he's the person, he, Mr. Veterans, the person that Mr. Johnson should go to to find out, "Have you made a decision?", that's ludicrous. We did not know what was going on. We questioned what was going on and what authority Mr. Better had. To the extent that this case has anything to do with the case that Judge Byrne decided, I would submit that this is a situation where you have the exact same authority that you had in that case. You, as the Board of Judgemen, can determine whether or not, under these circumstances, it's appropriate to allow this appeal to go forward. Going to the merits, it's important to take the things that have been argued by the complainant and really determine whether that's accurate. There's a claim that this was investigated thoroughly and that a close, hard look at all the information was made by Mr. Better. I don't know how he did that in three days without talking to Joshua Johnson, but that's another problem. Joshua Johnson never got an opportunity to explain this. Joshua Johnson and I were not available on October 4th when this was considered by the Planning Commission. Two members of this body were on that Planning Commission, and I hope you haven't made any predetermination on this, but the fact of the matter is, we didn't get an opportunity to address the issue of what constitutes work. We've had a lot of discussion about this, but I, with the Chair's permission, I'd like to hand out a case that was decided in 2011 out of North Carolina that talks about this very issue. And I'll just read it, and then I'll hand this out, so you can look at it later during your deliberations, but with the limited time, I'm not going to take time to pass it out. The Court here had to ascertain, quote, "The ordinary meaning of undefined and ambiguous terms," end quote. And so, it was looking at dictionaries for definitions. Ross Stanherter, on behalf of Carl Schenk, which you'll hear about later, did the same thing. But what the Court here did is look at Webster's Dictionary, where it defines, quote, "work," end quote, to include, quote, "sustained physical or mental effort to overcome obstacles and achieve an objective or result," end quote. Then they go on to say, "Applying this definition to the Bessemer City ordinance, the term, quote, 'work,' end quote, has a broader meaning than more than mere visible evidence of construction." And they cite a North Carolina case, this is a North Carolina court, the Supreme Court. That case was holding that, quote, "Landowners who incurred contractual obligations to construct a building and to purchase dry cleaning equipment acquired vested rights to carry on a nonconforming use, even though the contracts did not, quote, 'result in any visible change in the condition of the land,' end quote, end close quote." That is at page 5 of this decision, and I've got enough copies for all the Board members and Mr. Donahue, Mr. Robb, State's Attorney. There are other cases, including one that was just recently decided in 2016. We don't have time to go through a lot of case law here. I just want to mention this briefly, this is an Illinois Appeal Court case that says that there was an affidavit where the permit holder said he commenced construction of the garage within six months of issuance to the building permit, which involved, quote, "clearing the area, moving underground utilities and gravel placement, as well as marking the area for construction," end quote, and that was sufficient. It's clear that work is not construction, construction is something that is part of the work. In regard to the claim that the order for the materials on June 3rd was outside the 180 days, I will simply tell you, you can look it up on a calendar, excuse me, but June 2nd, the 180th day is a Sunday. The law automatically gives you the next day, Monday, to complete anything that's required within that 180 days. So, even though additional things had taken place before that, on June 3rd, that's still within the 180 days, even though it's the Monday after that Sunday deadline. Then, also looking at the submission on June 5th, of course, Mr. Johnson was aware of the opportunity to seek an extension. He's aware of the deadline, and he sought that because of the unprecedented problems with road closures, continuing storms, very high water tables, and the impossibility or impracticability of getting in and doing actual work to the extent necessary for this type of a building. We never contested that. He tried to comply. It's our position that he did comply with that requirement, and the idea that the common law would not apply here because we're talking about contractual terms that are, in fact, now part of our statute, just so you know. When we take things from the common law, put them into statute, that is just to make sure that on things that are very often encountered, like in contracts, it's going to be set out in black and white, and so there won't be any misinterpretation of common law. That doesn't make common law apply any less, and it doesn't make common law not apply to anything that's not in a statute. So, in this regard, I would certainly be willing to provide your State's Attorney with additional citations to cases, but that impracticality or impossibility, automatically extending that 180 days is a matter of law. And I think you probably have been advised that by your State's Attorney. If not, I would request respectfully that you go into executive session and pursue that. The conditional use permit and the building permit should have automatically been extended. But more importantly, I believe it's only the building permit that's subject to 1725's requirement of commencement, and furthermore, that we're wasting time if we don't just simply find that an appropriate solution to all this is to allow Mr. Johnson to get a new permit, if you are going to decide that there's any question that the expiration has occurred under Section 1725.
Two minutes.
And in regard to that, we have consistently presented opportunities for a new or renewed permit to be issued. The reason for doing that is not an admission that we did something wrong, but an admission that that would be the remedy under Section 1725, and we don't need to go through all of this. Mr. Johnson wants to be in compliance. We brought up the issue of the invalidity of amendments to the 2006, or, excuse me, the 2006 amendments to the ordinance, for a reason. It is appropriate to look at that, because obviously people have looked at these ordinances and decided whether things- and decided whether things are going to be accurately interpreted pursuant to what's online or what is the correct version of that ordinance. So, it's a very simple thing. Either you've got evidence that there was publication in a legal newspaper in the appropriate timeframe, or you don't. You can determine that. You don't have to base your decision on that, but if you know that that's the case, we can solve all of this by simply allowing Mr. Johnson to get a renewed permit or a new permit, however you want to term it. That is why we've been doing all of this. We have included in the binder the 2003 version of the Yankton County zoning ordinance. We believe that that will be necessary going forward. If we do lose on this, we will appeal, and we think that a court will find that it would be void as a matter of law for those 2006 amendments. Section 1725, as it's listed in 2003, only requires that you get a new building permit or a renewed building permit. Either way, we're at the same place. If you find that he did not do the work, which I think he certainly proved here, he started that work in the timeframe.
Time.
So, we'd ask that you rule on the merits or if not, allow him to get a renewed permit.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to thirty-minute Board of Adjustment decision. If anyone from the board wants to ask any questions, if anyone now would be the time.
I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson and Mr. Donahue to respond to a couple of questions. In the materials that have been provided, have you found anything that you've been negligent in providing to the county or that you've been not completed as you said you would, other than the 180-day?
Mr. Johnson represents that he's not aware of anything, and in the materials that I've reviewed, I've asked Mr. Johnson to go back and even look at text messages and things. He's come up with everything he can, and we're not aware of anything that Mr. Johnson failed to do, other than the alleged failure to commence construction or actual work, actual construction, excuse me, prior to June 2, 2019.
So, in other words, then, if you were to apply for another permit, it would be a duplicate of the information you already provided?
That's exactly correct, and we have, in fact, and you'll see in the binder, several times, well, I should say, two times. First, we made a contingent application, simply incorporating by reference all the materials that were in the building permitted issue here, which is number 3430. Subsequent to that, just on Monday of this week, we submitted another one without any contingencies and just said, "Here's a building permit application. It will be the exact same thing as in 3430. There's no need for an appeal if this can be approved."
Would I be wrong in saying that, given that, then, the only thing this argument is about is over probably the term "work" versus "construction," and it's what we had on our form that you read to us earlier? That's the only issue, whether we would, we consider all the stuff that you go through, coming to these meetings, researching things, getting things, talking to neighbors, all that is, is, would be considered work, in my opinion, but that's what we're arguing about right now.
That's correct, and we would submit that all the planning and the process that has to be done in order to ensure that when you do order those materials and their delivery dates, which are set forth on that order that was made June 3, that's all work, too, and all the stuff that happens before.
Mr. Johnson, did you, have you worked with a bank to be able to pay for these things?
Yes.
You had to go in and sit in front of an officer and get?
Yeah, talk to him.
Provide him plans and projections and so forth. That wasn't any work.
No, not at all.
Which bank was that, by the way?
It started with First National is where I started, and I worked with Core Trust.
Core Trust.
And just to clarify, that would have been well before June 2.
Yeah. I wondered, and maybe you can comment about it, but I was wondering, having worked for Farm Credit, as Mr. Swenson said, for many years, I was involved in a lot of litigation, and sometimes lawyers didn't meet deadlines, just occasionally. And sometimes, when they weren't actually in the courtroom, we got charges for work that they did back in their office. Does that happen in your situation?
I'm sorry, I have questions.
Does that happen in your situation? Do you ever charge a customer for work that you're doing in your office when you're not in a courtroom and doing legal work?
Do I bill for my time doing my work?
Yeah.
As opposed to the work that's specified in the permit? Yeah, I do. I bill for my work.
It's pretty normal. It's a pretty normal procedure in almost every industry to bill for, and that's what I'm saying this work is, is it's work.
By that definition, the work commenced before the permit was issued? I can't think of the case.
If I could address that just very briefly, it's not uncommon for a lot of work to have begun prior to the permit being issued. The permit itself is not required for certain things. It's required only for those things that are listed in your ordinance. So, we can choose to delay getting that permit, but we can do those things. That's still work. So, the question then becomes, is it nonsensical to say, we're in the permit at the lower left-hand corner, it says "work or construction," that you exclude all work? Well, no. But the point is, you can have some cessation or you can stop doing the work at some point, and if you don't follow through, then clearly you will have stopped the work, and then you've got to have construction. That's why you have "work or construction." So, it's not a situation where you have to meet both to commence it, but if you've stopped, you better prove one or the other later in order to establish that you've continued that and not abandoned it. So, when you start the work or commence the work for the things that are required for the permit, then that is what we would consider to be work, and that's what we're talking about here in regard to the planning and the ordering of the things that would have to be done under a building permit that you can't do without permission from the county. I would say that the definition that you have in that case of North Carolina is even broader than that. They didn't, the court there didn't seem to have any problem with it at all.
Thank you.
I got a question. So, what work can you do without a building permit? Like, you can still go to the bank, you can get your loan, you can do your conditional use permit. That's the process that they came before you on a conditional use permit, and they told you they were going to build?
I don't know of any banks that would probably issue you, make a loan guarantee that you could do a project until you got permission in the county to build, especially in Yankton County. I mean, I've had calls from banks saying, "What do you think? Would you make loans on cables until you get permission to do it?" I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't aim myself out with a loan commitment because once you make a commitment, you can potentially be sued or not living up to it.
I think that, to answer the Chair's question, in regard to those things that you could do without a building permit, there's nothing that would stop you from doing it. The issue is, once the permit is actually in play and you have to get it, then you have to, you have to be able to prove that you actually did that work within 180 days of the building permit being issued, or it needs to be reapplied for, correct? So, you don't have to do that ahead of time. You can go pull the building permit and then go do all that stuff, but you've got to do it within 180 days. If you choose to do it beforehand, there's no prohibition on that. So, it's not a situation where every single case that is a concentrated animal feeding operation requiring conditional use is going to be work that's commenced beforehand. It's possible somebody could do that type of a process where they're actually going to come in and say, you know, theoretically, I think I can build this. Theoretically, I can do all these things and get financed, get the conditional use permit, then turn around and do all those things with good luck of getting it done in 180 days.
All right, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Peterson, if you wouldn't mind. We'll get the other side of this. To what you had said, you don't need to get a building permit to talk to your banker, you don't need a building permit to think about what you're doing, you need a building permit for actual, real construction. Is that your take on that?
Yes. If talking to neighbors, coming to these hearings, getting financing, researching what you want to do, if that all really is the definition of work, then that means their work started before the permits were even issued. So that can't be what the ordinance means by the word "work." It has a different meaning, and it's not just working on the project, it's work on the matter for which you have been permitted. Have they done the work that's set forth in the permit? Have they started to do that? And it's up to you to decide what threshold is required to meet that definition.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Peterson? The board like to ask any more questions of anyone else?
There's twenty minutes.
Yes, I have kind of a question, clarification, and I don't have the date of the meeting in front of me, but, Mr. Johnson, you came in in front of the board and made a comment that you no longer need an extension, work had commenced, acknowledging that the start of that construction had commenced on the barn and that that was identifying the work that needed to begin. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The photo from that, I don't see it in here, was a, I don't, but I've seen it before. It was a wood staircase and a, what was it? How big was that concrete slab reported? Was it like a foot by a foot, or how big was that?
Three foot by two foot, I suppose, the concrete.
Okay. And that, when did that take place?
I don't remember exactly. It was right at the end of May or very first part of June. I sent the pictures to Brian McGess on the night of June, that Sunday. It was done before that. They would also move dirt before that, not a lot, it was too wet.
When you did repour concrete, did that concrete then become part of your structure?
Yep.
What was that for? Like a step, or what was that for?
So, you got concrete before you hit your steps.
Okay.
If I have one more question, Mr. Chair, for Mr. Donahue. You'd made a comment, the reason the permit was pulled early, there was a rush to get the permit before the ordinance was changed. Is that, did I hear that correct, or could you expand upon that?
No, that's not what I said. If I did, I misspoke. I was suggesting that there was an attempt to use the 180-day rule in a rush of complaints to address things very similar to what my client experienced in the North Hill Farms case in 2006. A building permit was applied for in 2006. Several people complained that it was a building permit and it didn't require a conditional use. There were a number of meetings with the planning commission, county commission, addressing some of these concerns, and then the planning commission jumped right into a moratorium and then into, or I should say, planning commission and county commission, then right into the planning commission meetings without a public notice. So, in regard to these things, I know that it's disconcerting, and it's really, as I said before, something that the producers don't want to have to go to when we look at something, especially longstanding issues like this, where something was decided and done in a way that didn't meet the requirements. But, and in fact, Mr. Peterson was on the other side, arguing that in any appeal of a conditional use or other zoning decision, this issue of the authority of the board allows a party, either of the parties involved, to raise the issue of the validity of the ordinance. The county, which was Brookings County, and my client, Killa Skilling, is the name of the company, Killa Skilling LLC, argued very hard that you can't do that, that it's going to unsettle things, it's not appropriate, et cetera. The bottom line is, the South Dakota Supreme Court said it goes to the authority of the board, and so it can be raised at any time. And because it can be raised at any time now, as a practical matter, it has to be raised by anyone who is subject to these things. So what I was talking about before was not my client, it was the people who thought perhaps this was a way to address the invalidity, as they saw it, of these permits and attacking it under the 180-day rule. And I thought it was in a rush to try to take advantage of an interpretation of the ordinance that would then give them a second chance at a conditional use permit hearing. I don't believe the law applies in that way. I don't think the conditional use permits can expire to the extent that they could. I think that would be a violation of my client's civil rights and their property rights and a taking without compensation, so therefore unconstitutional. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I got one. With the weather, how did the weather impact this facility and its construction? You know, specifically, you made reference that they were able to get in a bulldozer and an excavator. I mean, those are pretty heavy items. I guess what was preventing, you know, cement trucks or delivery of, you know, materials? If they can get a bulldozer in and they can get an excavator, why couldn't they get lighter loads in?
Sure. Let me just back up and give you a little background and explain it. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I was in construction and land development for three years in the Boston area before I went to law school. The way that this took place was that the weather prevented anything from happening sooner than May because the ground was simply too wet or roads were closed and it was impossible to get heavy equipment in. Once it was possible to get heavy equipment in, the first thing was the attempt to clear the land, and to do that, you need to remove the topsoil and any vegetation. Once they tried to do that, they quickly understood in May that it was too wet, the equipment was getting bogged down, and they had to abandon that effort. So regardless of whether you could get equipment in, you couldn't do the first step, which was removing topsoil and doing the excavation to get the pit built. Once the ground did get a little more stable, they brought in the excavator, correct? Okay. The excavator came in and started to dig deeper. The water immediately filled up, and this is groundwater, and I don't know if anybody has ever experienced the water holding, even in the hills, the way it did this spring. But the groundwater table was very high, and all of that water would come up, it would basically boil up in the pit as they tried to excavate it. In construction, we normally handle that with dewatering, but in this situation, it was clear that as quickly as it was filling up, you weren't going to be able to dewater that and stabilize the excavation in order to safely remove that soil or to do it in any practical manner. So, that's what was going on with the weather, and this is all because of the unprecedented amount of moisture and the soil saturation that we encountered here in Yankton County, excuse me, in the spring of 2019.
Any other questions from anyone from the board?
There's thirteen minutes.
Having worked in construction of ethanol facilities, at one time, there should have been an ethanol plant built in Meckling, and there isn't an ethanol plant in Meckling today. That was on my list of 200 ethanol plants to build across the nation. When they apply for those CUP permits for sites like that, they don't take into consideration the engineering work we did. When we said work began at the site, it was when they were working at the site. We did not consider excavation to be work. We considered stick above grade to be work. And I do believe that is the intent of our ordinance, is that work begins at the site as outlined in the building permit, and if you read the building permit, it states the dimensions of the barn, and that is all it states. Confined animal feeding operation barn, dimensions 50 by 100, whatever it states. Confined animal feeding operation barn, dimensions 50 by 100, whatever it states. And that is essentially industry standard for the definition of work. It did not consider the pumps we had lined up in the warehouse to build 200 ethanol plants, none of the steel we had on contract, or the concrete, or anything. It was work at the site. And that never stood in Meckling. Meckling was never being worked on when you look at that definition.
You know, just to go off that, historically, I mean, I think we can split hairs and argue either way pretty easily what work is. What the county has constituted as work has never been flat work. It has never been dirt work. At least in Mr. Garrity's tenure and Mr. McGinnis's tenure. Mr. McGinnis authored much of this, and right out of his mouth is flat work and dirt work do not constitute the start of construction or work in that. The other argument Mr. McGinnis gave me many times was that it must continue diligently. And to my knowledge, in this case, that did not, did not happen, even if we constituted flat work or dirt work as start.
On page 114 of our ordinance, to tag off of what Commissioner Healy said, exemptions to building permits. So essentially, you do not need a building permit for concrete slabs on grade, fences, corrals, windbreaks, semi-portable egg structures. So none of those need a building permit. As far as the five days that was referred to in
1903?
On November 15th, 2018, the verdict from the court case, where in here it said five working days of the decision. It also references down below that Section 1801 grants the Planning Commission that same power. I do believe the judge was using an outdated version of the ordinance. If you read our ordinance here today and if you look at 1903, the timeframe has changed to 10 working days after, the intent to appeal within 10 working days, and then a written appeal must be filed within five additional working days. Then if you go back to the 2301, the party responsible for the violation shall respond within seven working days, and I do believe that was in Mr. Vedder's letter, was the seven working days from receipt of the letter. Otherwise, they are considered in violation. So I do believe the deadline was met, whether you used one of those or the other, but sadly, I think the judge was using an outdated version of the ordinance when she made her decision.
Mr. Donahoe, we have four pages of packets to scroll through, so it's hard to find. The letter, November 1st, that Mr. Peterson referred to showed your notice of intent to appeal. Was there further action on that? Was there an official written notification following that?
It was immediately set for appeal and treated as actually both the notice of intent and the actual appeal.
Okay.
And then the hearing dates were discussed. We tried to get a date in November. We couldn't because of unavailability of parties in the council, and we ended up with this date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion if you're ready for that.
Do we have any more questions from anyone from the board?
No.
Anyone want to go through, have taken any time to? I do have one question. Initially, when Mr. McGinnis sent out these letters, I believe we got some letters back from some aunts, like a Miss Mary Ann Boyd. Do you guys have any of those stating that they didn't want this construction to continue? Do you guys have any reference to those? And has, because that's not actually Mr. Johnson's property where it's being built on. Is that correct or is that incorrect or? Just trying to understand this better.
Seeing the letter, do you have a pay or?
I don't, I don't have it in here. I'm trying to look. Do you, do you own the property? Have you since purchased it or what?
I own it.
Okay. Did you own it? When did you purchase that?
They have a contract for deed. And they, after they got the letters, they worried about getting sued. So I had to buy the place out, had to go to the bank and go that route.
So you have recently purchased this property then? That was my question because I do believe we had a letter from Miss Boyd. But I don't see it in here. Any other questions from anyone on the board? Did you have a motion, Mr. Catterin?
Yes, I'd make a motion to reverse the determination that the building permit and conditional use permit has expired for the reasons set forth in the discussion and that we issue Mr. Josh Johnson a approved building permit.
My concern, does the Board of Adjustment have the authority to issue a building permit? I don't think that's something the Board of Adjustment does, does it?
My opinion, all they can do is maybe.
Can I just address that briefly?
One moment. I think the Board of Adjustment shall uphold, overrule, or amend the decision. Those are our options. Those are the three things we're able to do.
If you read, if you read a little bit further in that same section, though, it does say that you basically have all the powers of the zoning administrator.
I concur with Brian. But I think, Don, in effect, that that's what would be occurring because, in a sense, if you end reversing the decision, then that would validate the building permit or an application for the building permit.
All the things that we've talked about over the last two years about CAFOs, whether it's poultry, cattle, or hogs, it's always been about a number of other issues and various things that could be done to abate the impact of those facilities on neighbors and communities and so forth. And my understanding of this application, and maybe, maybe it is of all the ones that are in front of us, is that that work, that work has been done and approved. And if we just make them apply again and they apply with the same information, we aren't accomplishing much, other than forcing a bunch of paperwork for very little or no reason at all. And so it seems to me like when we're arguing about definitions of work and construction and 180 days or one day past delinquency, yeah, that it's all part of the big picture, but not very significant.
I don't totally disregard that comment, Don. I go back, or one thing in my mind, though, is, you know, I understand the weather situation that we were in the spring. I certainly do, and I think that was very difficult to deal with. Part of it was the environment that we were in as far as a county and the issue. But to me, you know, it was acknowledged that expiration was coming up. It was acknowledged that certain things had to have been done. We identified a clear path to just mitigate this, and rather than going that route, the option was I'll pour a piece of concrete and call it good. And again, I understand some of the reasoning behind that with the environment we're in, but it seems like everybody has been playing the cards that they have, and it puts everything into this predicament. And I think if we look straight at the intent of this ordinance and has it been followed, I would probably say no.
One thing that's interesting is I don't think we can pick and choose. We have a challenge to our 2006 changes to our zoning ordinance because one thing wasn't done, and we have lived under those ordinances for 13 years. And to say, because we missed the 180 deadline by one day, five days, or 10 days, is exactly the same argument. You cannot pick and choose the details that try to keep us all heading down the same road. At some point, you have a line in the sand, and if we're going to give on this, then I would expect to give on the 2006 changes to the ordinance and call them good.
Don, did you have something?
Sherry just shot me down.
Sorry. Well, you've got six seconds, Don. Go ahead.
All right, well, time being, we out of time?
There you go.
All right. I would entertain a motion, and like last time, Mr. State's attorney, the only motion that, per your recommendation last time, is overrule anything other than all four votes is, is upholding the zoning administrator's decision. Is that correct?
The ordinance says for a five of the full membership. The ordinance says.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
Well, do I have to withdraw my motion?
What did you have? I didn't, I don't know if you finished.
I said I made a motion to reverse the determination that the building permit, the conditional use permit, has expired for the reasons set forth in the discussion.
Did he say that the conditional use permit expired or is it only a building permit in the letter?
Both.
Okay. So your motion is?
So I'll pull that back if the discussion is opposed to that.
Trying to find the letter.
I think we're going to have to have a motion and a vote anyway.
Yeah.
I'd second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Could you restate the motion one more time, please?
Your?
He seconded.
To do away with it?
Correct, to overturn.
Yeah, so reread your motion.
Okay, I'll reread my, motion to reverse the determination that the building permit and conditional use permit has expired for reasons set forth in the discussion.
And you second that? All right. I have a motion and a second, further discussion. So a vote yes is to overturn, a vote no is to uphold. Everybody good with that? Roll call, vote, please.
Catterin?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
Los?
No.
Flummish?
No. Motion does not pass. Anybody need a break? We got a few minutes before the next one. All right, we're still in Board of Adjustment. Should have the maintenance guys tighten. All of these are getting pretty loose. All right, the time being 11:50, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, item number seven. We're still in Board of Adjustment. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, a peer appeal hearing, Carl Schenk Building Permit 3429. We're going to use the same format we used at the last meeting, 10 minutes for a complaint in case. Now, this is a combined time for all the complainants. Then we're going to do 20 minutes for the permit holder case, followed by 20 minutes for the complainant's rebuttal, followed by 10 minutes for permit holder rebuttal, and then 30 minutes for the Board of Adjustment discussion. Is everyone on the board okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So at this time, if, we'll open it up for 10 minutes of the complaint holder's case. So is there somebody for the complaint holder's case?
Excuse me, point of order. I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to address the same issue that we had previously with Mr. Swenson, and will need to make that objection in this proceeding as well, for the same reasons, but also with the additional reason that there are subsequent social media posts, including one very recently, that makes a reference to a previous court case with Mr. Schenk, which actually was determined in the favor of Mr. Schenk, but was intended clearly to cast aspersions on him. We believe that for the same reasons we stated in the previous proceeding, Mr. Swenson is not able to get past the unacceptable risk of potential bias, actual bias, or prejudgment in this case. And I can elaborate on that further if the board.
Yeah, last time, you said there was like some threats or, could you elaborate on what, what you meant by that?
Sure. If you will refer to my November 14th letter.
Could you guide me to where that is? We have a whole bunch of documents in here. Do you know what file that's in?
It would be approximately in the middle, so I'm guessing, I don't remember how the packets are broken out.
I think it's on packet six. Is it six or seven? I think it's the first page of six. It's your November 14th?
Correct. Correct.
Letter.
And if you want to look at Exhibit A?
It's page five.
Page five.
I guess I'm not seeing.
It's part six of 3429.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. That was taken as a threat. There was a report made to the Sheriff's Department in regard to the specific threat where it says, quote, hog barns being built with expired or no permits. Couldn't get any worse. Starting to sound like the wild, wild west. No one dead yet. And there are, I guess, four dots between no one dead and yet, signed by Gary Swenson, Yankton County Commissioner. Now, I note that everything before the Gary Swenson part is all caps, Mr. Swenson's name is not. It's repeated in a previous post. There's also references to other members of this body that are shown there. And previous to that, there have been a number of similar types of posts. There have been a number after that. The most recent is a reference to Mr. Schenk in a perjury case that was ruled in favor of Mr. Schenk, but there's no discussion about the outcome, just discussion about the fact that there was a perjury case.
Any questions from the Board?
Yeah.
I'd move that we request Mr. Swenson to recuse himself from the session.
Do we get to have a say in this?
Let's give him a moment to defend himself before we make a motion. Go ahead.
I don't remember your name, Consular, but I don't know if you're from Yankton County, but I also had threats, and I was attacked by two hog barn CAFO owners, where I had to call 911 and have a deputy respond. And that was filed at the Yankton County Sheriff's Office, and then it went over to Mr. Clemmish, and he did nothing. I also went to the judge in Yankton, asking for a restraining order, and the judge said that, it's just hearsay, that they're gonna kill you with the talk in the bar. So anyway, I'd just like to have that for a reference that you know about that. I don't know where you're from. And then just one more quick thing. When I was in college, as it took a long time to get my degree, criminal justice, one of the professors, Professor Mike Roach, who has three law degrees, was one of my many professors, said that if you ever become a lawyer, an attorney, I should say, there's a line to be crossed. And if you cross that line, there's no coming back. So I'd just like to leave you with those thoughts. And then there's also another thing that he always said, that there's guilt by association. I believe that you know, and everybody knows, that Mr. Schenk gave us the Heil Hitler salute, not once, but twice. Three of us are here, are veterans. And Dan Clemmish made a nice rebuttal. I added to it. But Don Kettering never said a word, and he's a veteran. Kind of thought that was a little strange. But I don't know if you're a veteran or not, doesn't make any difference. But to make threats like that, with comments like a guy that Hitler killed millions of Jews and Russians and Gypsies, I find that pretty offensive as a veteran myself, who comes from a veteran, a family's from Civil War to Iraq and everything in between. So guilt by association, and that's from Professor Mike Roach from the University of South Dakota with three law degrees. Thank you, Mr. Consular.
You made your motion. I will second it.
I have a motion.
I'm gonna turn this on. I have a motion and a second further discussion.
We want to offer Mr. Swenson the opportunity to recuse himself.
No, you can vote on it.
I have a motion and a second further discussion.
We want to offer Mr. Swenson the opportunity to recuse himself.
No, you can vote on it.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. Roll call, vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Los?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Clemmish?
No. All right, at this time, I'd like you to go out in the hallway, please.
Can I go home, or do you come back later?
What is your thoughts, Mr. State's Attorney?
It's gonna be the same client, the same decision, so if we want to maybe make that motion right now for the next hearing, that'll allow Mr. Swenson to make the decision to be the same.
Don, did you want to make that motion for the next hearing as well?
For the record, we would make the same objection in your class staff.
Yes. Would you state that motion again, Don?
I think I made the motion that would request that Mr. Swenson recuse himself from this hearing and the next appeal hearing on Mr. Shure.
At 1:20? Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. Roll call, vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Los? Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Healy?
Yes.
Clemmish?
No. All right, we'll put it in the record that Mr. Swenson left the meeting.
And Merry Christmas to everybody.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up for a 10-minute complainant case. And again, I remind you, this is a combined time for all complainants. So is there anybody who'd like to speak as a complainant on this case? Now would be the time. Come on out, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Phil Taub from Gayville. On December 4th of 2018, a CUP 4-2 1200-head hog finishing confinement was granted to Mr. Schenk. On December 11th, a billing permit was issued. That billing permit and accompanying CUP expired 180 days from December 11th on June 9th of this year. Several requests for zoning enforcement were submitted in July due to no visible construction performed before expiration of the billing permit 3429. As of today, work as described in the CUP has not been conducted. Instead, a different structure has been built other than one approved by this body in December of last year. These are the facts of the dates and the building's concern in this case. Section 25 is currently posted online. The billing permit shall expire if the work described in any building permit, CUP, or variance has not begun within 180 days or completed within two years. Section 2303, the recourse for what happens, because we don't know what's gonna happen. They can appeal, they can do nothing, or they can reapply. But in any case, you have the authority and the direction by state law in Section 2303 by any, by the zoning administrator or any designee to prevent such unlawful erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, conversion, maintenance, or use, to restrain, correct, or abate such violation, to prevent the occupancy of said building, structure, or land, or to prevent any illegal act, conduct, business, or use in the land or in or about the premises. Again, on May 14th of 2019, a tractor parade was in town and showed up at the planning commission meeting. A nearly 20-minute discussion regarding extensions was had by the members there. Mr. and Mrs. Schenk were in attendance and sat in the front row. Commissioner McGinnis opened the discussion in an hour and 57 minutes with the following: Conditional use and billing permit extensions, more importantly, has the county given them, and if so, how? Because there is nothing in your ordinance to allow it to happen. Further statements relating to the need for the applicant to reapply was made by commission members and temporary zoning administrator. The lawsuit in Hanson County was again recalled, and the lawsuit determination for that because the building extension was granted and it was not permitted. These same discussions were again in planning commission on June 11th and July 9th, and by the commissioners here, June 4th and June 18th. The remedy was always simple, even though it was a complex situation. Come in, talk about your permit, how do we reapply, what do you need to reapply for? Get it done. The facts are clear. They had plenty of reason to know the proper course, and even if they didn't, there's no excuse for not complying. Yet, none of these operators took corrective actions. And I believe this is an intentional move meant to show complete disregard for this county and this board in particular. This contentious situation we are in is a result of their actions and not of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time do we have left?
6:45.
About six and a half minutes?
Thank you. And just because we're technically in a different hearing, my name is Mitch Peterson. I represent the complainants. I'm an attorney from Sioux Falls. Be a little more brief, just because these issues, there's a lot of overlap in terms of the legal issues and ordinances. And in light of Board Member Los' comments regarding Section 1903 and Judge Burns' decision, I did quickly jump online to verify that. Under either the new or the old, they're untimely. Under the first version, under 1903.3, with the five working days, again, the notice of expiration went out on October 24. Five working days from that is October 31. They didn't appeal until November 1. They're untimely under that. If in fact, the correct version is the one that says, "Any person aggrieved by a decision of the zoning administrator shall file a written intent to appeal with the zoning administrator within 10 working days after the building permit has been issued," in accordance with Section 1731. A full written appeal must be filed with the zoning administrator within five additional working days. So if in fact, it's a 10-working day, then Mr. Donahue's letter of November 1 is within that 10-day period. I think that's not reasonably debatable. What it is, is best described by the bold section in Mr. Donahue's November 1 letter that says, "Finally, please consider this as notice of intent to appeal," under Section 1903 of the zoning ordinances, if applicable. This is the notice of intent. There's been no full written appeal filed thereafter within five days with the zoning administrator. There was a November 14 letter, which is more than five days, but that was an objection to allegations of a secret meeting or an improper meeting. So under either direction, they didn't perfect the appeal process. It can be deemed untimely by this Board, and the Board need not get into the substance. If the Board proceeds to the substance, I think this case is even clearer than the one that came earlier this morning with Mr. Johnson. There was no above-grade site work done within a 180-day period, either after the building permit or the conditional use permit as set forth in the complainant's paperwork, as well as the information presented in response. There was other activities allegedly going on, ordering product, thinking about what they wanted to do, but that's not above-grade site work and is not sufficient. Moreover, when Mr. Schenk did commence above-grade site work, he didn't do the work for which he was permitted. The building permit is for two 1200-head barns oriented in a particular direction. It's not what he built. It's not what he's building. He built a single 24-head unit barn oriented differently. He commenced whatever work he felt like doing, not what he was actually permitted to do, which is again a brazen disrespect for this Board. So he didn't, he didn't begin any above-grade site work within the timeframe. When he did get around to it, he didn't build what he was permitted to build. For either or both of those reasons, substantively, the zoning administrator's decision should be upheld, the appeal should be dismissed. And finally, I will remind the Board that under the highly deferential standard of review, both in defining terms, what it means to commence work, what it means to file a full written appeal, all of those determinations about what your ordinances mean, and whether Mr. Schenk has complied with them procedurally and substantively, are up for you to decide. And the Court's not gonna second-guess you and reweigh your decision and jump back in and wrestle with the evidence. What you decide is gonna stand. You have the power to do that, and the Court is not going to reverse your decision for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time's left?
2:20.
Anybody like to speak for the last two minutes for the complainant's case? All right, seeing the hearing done, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and move on to the permit holders' case. 20 minutes. Somebody who'd like to speak on this? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my name is Brian Donahue from Donahue Law Firm in Sioux Falls. I represent Carl Schenk in this matter and in the subsequent hearing that will be held after this one. And I want to start by addressing some of the things that were discussed without an opportunity for us to address them after the conclusion of the presentation of witnesses and evidence in the proceeding appeal. Specifically, I want to address this concept of whether the term "work" has been interpreted in the past by Mr. Garrity, Mr. McGinnis, or others on behalf of Yankton County to require that there be stick built for above-ground construction in order to be considered work under the provision that requires commencement within 180 days from the building permit. And I have to start with the initial question of what version of Section 1725 are we using? The determination that was just made in the previous hearing was to affirm a decision by the zoning administrator that the building permit and the conditional use permit had expired. That's not what the online version of Section 1725 says. It says the building permit will expire, and that's it. And by affirming the decision of the zoning administrator in that case, and we have the exact same language in the October 24th letter to Mr. Schenk in this case, you are exceeding your authority under that version of 1725. I don't know what's, what version is applying here. What I do know is that if we're talking about work and we're using the sense that is used in the ethanol construction business, that's different from my experience in doing subdivisions and doing underground utilities and other things. That's on the East Coast, and I'll admit that. I did work for a short period of time while I was, just before and while I was attending law school for Sweden Construction and some of their related companies. That's back in 1990. My experience has been that work includes more than the actual construction, or if it's going to include things like the building or the other permanent structures above ground, you need to spell that out. That is why the case that I provided to you and another one called Weaver versus Cleary from the Illinois Court of Appeals would allow for the term "work" to include things such as clearing the area, moving underground utilities and gravel placement, or just marking the area for construction.
Sir, was that what you handed out?
No.
Last one, is it different?
No, this is something different. I can hand this to you. I don't have additional copies.
We can make them, but, thank you, sir.
Highlighted. So if we're talking about a conditional use permit being susceptible to an expiration date, if the work is not commenced within 180 days, and you keep that version of your interpretation of work applying to both of those, how in the world are you going to survive the appeal period? Because another provision in your ordinance says, "Don't pull the billing permit during the appeal period, because if you do, it's at your own risk." What happens if that decision is overturned? Now, neither Mr. Johnson's case nor Mr. Schenk's case, was there an appeal? But that doesn't matter. Your interpretation makes no sense. If you're gonna apply that version of the interpretation of the word "work" to a conditional use permit, thank you. You are gonna put every permit holder under the gun. They're gonna have to start actual construction regardless of any appeal, or they're gonna have to continually come back for a renewed permit. Now, I'm not talking about just a building permit, a renewed conditional use permit. And that makes no sense. Are we gonna be doing these things on a revolving basis every six months when they're on appeal? These appeals can take years. For those reasons, I think that's not the appropriate way to approach this. I think you're mistaken in using that paradigm or that framework for analysis of this particular issue. First of all, I think it is strictly the building permit. And at a minimum, you need to overturn this decision that affects anything to do with the conditional use permit. Secondly, I'm a little offended by the suggestion in all of these cases that these applicants who then got permits did nothing, or when they had the option to do something, failed to do it. This record is replete, as was Mr. Johnson's, with attempts not to just throw a few pigs out there and call it good, throw a piece of cement out there and call it good, or in the case of Mr. Schenk, to do several things which we're about to discuss in order to meet that requirement, but consistently requesting of Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Clemmish, and others. What do I have to do? What do I have to do? Am I in compliance? Let me know if there's a problem. As late as September, I have a text that was sent from Mr. Clemish to my client that says, "There was a representation by Mr. McGinnis to the county commission that you're in compliance." And furthermore, there was a meeting between an attorney, Rasta, and Herter here in Yankton, and Mr. Clemish, with Mr. McGinnis to specifically address the alleged expiration and problems with construction on this particular site. We'll get into those details later, but I just want to make sure that I set the table before we get into the facts here and let you know that none of these applicants are sitting on their hands or trying to game the system. All of them, especially when I got involved, made sure they applied for another building permit. We've never been able to get that renewed permit, extension permit, whatever you want to call it. If you're going to affirm this decision, the only result under Section 1725, as I see it, is you have to go back and apply for a renewed permit. If you're talking about a renewed conditional building permit, that's a whole different deal. And as I talked about in the previous appeal, that is taking away a property right, a vested right to use this property. I don't think you want to go that route. In regard to the specifics of this case, although we'll have the same legal arguments as in Mr. Johnson's case, there are significant additional facts. In this particular situation with building permit number 3429, which we're on right now for Section 24, there was a conditional use permit granted on December 4 and a building permit issued on December 11 of 2018. That was for the specific number of head set forth on the site plan. And there is now, suddenly today, for the first time, an argument that Mr. Schenk built something different from what was set forth on that building site plan for the work, or, excuse me, for the building permit to do that work. Well, if that's part of the complaint, I missed it because it's certainly not addressed in Mr. Vedder's letter, and we appealed that. And I would submit we appealed that timely because that letter and others prior to it said, "We'd like to work with you. We'd like to have the county understand that we're trying to comply. If we need to do another building permit, we'll do so. We'll even make contingent building permit applications," which we did. We submitted that letter on November 1 within the time period provided in the letter for response. And again, the same situation that we had with Mr. Johnson applies here. Mr. Schenk was notified that there were some concerns about these things in the summer. He worked with Mr. McGinnis. He was told he was in compliance. He was told that his building permits had not expired. Then on October 1, the county commission delegates authority to the planning commission to investigate and determine these complaints. October 4, planning commission holds its hearing. We understand there was a determination made on Mr. Schenk's building permits. There's a little bit of a wrinkle here. You want to talk about technicalities. You want to apply your law evenly every single time. The planning commission goes by a majority vote, and it's a majority vote of those members present and voting. Your vote was four to zero on eight members present. The specific provisions of your ordinance say that abstaining members' votes do not count for or against. Therefore, they are not a vote, and you do not have a majority in that determination indicating that Mr. Schenk was in violation or his permits had expired. Again, as I mentioned previously, there was never a subsequent meeting, either of the county commission or the planning commission, in which that determination made on November 4 was ever rescinded, reconsidered, or otherwise taken back, nor was there ever a county commission determination that the building permit issued and complaint or conditional use permit issued and complaint in regard to the expiration under this 180-day provision were going to be determined by anybody other than the planning commission. Subsequent to that, on October 21, Mr. Vedder was hired, and then on October 24, a letter was issued, according to the date on the letter. That letter was sent regular U.S. mail. There was never an attempt to ensure that that was received on a timely basis. As soon as it was received, we immediately made determinations and responded to it, and that's the November 1 letter. It was accepted by this board as the appeal. Now, clearly, we did provide that that was for a notice of appeal, notice of intent to appeal, but also in that same letter, we said, "We still want to work with you. We still want to get this resolved. We can do this with a building permit," and addressing some of the other concerns. As I said, in the Johnson case, the same is true here. There was never a response to that letter nor to any of my letters. And I want to draw your attention to the fact that on August 16, we had also sent a letter to the zoning administrator and requested clarification on some issues. I don't think that that's in your packet. It should be. In regard to the matters at issue here, there's an October 2 letter in which we understand that there had been a request for enforcement of these time limits. We specifically said that significant information had been set forth by Mr. Dan Herter. There was a meeting on August 15. It's referenced in a September 2 letter from Mr. Dan Herter. That's clearly in your packet, so there's no question. There's an ongoing dialogue with Brian McGinnis, Rasta, and Herter on behalf of Mr. Schenk, and Rob Clemish, who sat in on that meeting. And at no time did Mr. Schenk understand that he was in violation or that there had been an actual determination made in regard to his permit having expired, either the conditional use permit or the building permit, until the October 24 letter was received. And again, he had no way to know that Gary Vedder was going to make that decision or that the letter would be forthcoming. So to argue that we are untimely because we didn't receive that until after a significant period had passed while that was in the mail is probably an issue of a stoppel, and it's not fair for the board to apply that rule strictly and say that we're out of time. I believe they understand that we were within the 10 days for the notice. The same thing applies in regard to treating it as the appeal. Again, in the November 1 letter, we said, "We're going to try to work things out. We're certainly willing to continue to address this." We didn't get a response from that other than to say, "We're scheduling hearings for your appeal." So the zoning administrator made the determination that we were in compliance with requirements for appeal and that this board would have an appeal. We just needed to set a date. So there was a waiver, or this board is stopped, from arguing that we untimely filed any appeals in this case or the one that will follow. Now, having said all of that, let's look at the merits. In this particular instance, as I mentioned before, you've got the issuance of the conditional use permit and then the building permit. The materials in your file show that on March 28 and 29, there was a material order, this is 2019, there was a material order for the buildings at issue here. And then there was a revised order in May, and there was production of all of the materials necessary for construction of the building. And I want to just touch on this briefly. We're not prepared to address this because it's not in the complaints, but any modification of the building plan that is not part of the discussion in the materials that you have would have been something that took place with either Pat Garrity or then Brian McGinnis, and then at any time, there could have been follow-up if there was questions. But while there was interaction between Mr. Schenk or his legal counsel and the zoning administrator and the state's attorney, anybody could have raised that issue if they were concerned about it. But I will have Mr. Schenk step up here and affirm that if there was any change in the building, it still meets all the requirements for the conditional use permit. It's not a material change in regard to the number of head, square footage, location, or any of those specific issues that would require a new building permit. Changes happen all the time. If there's a concern, a change order may require that there be a modification or a note on the building permit file, but any changes that were made in this situation would not be grounds for revocation of that permit for construction that wasn't authorized. So having said all that, we'll go back to what's really happening on the site in May. You've got affidavits that were submitted along with Mr. Dan Herter's letter for Mr. Craig Johnson and others. He attempted work to do the actual excavation in May of 2019. Because of the conditions, he was not able to do that. In regard to the conditional use permit expirations, we've got the same issues as the previous matter where the deadline for 180 days falls on a Sunday, but the work on the site included emails that Mr. McGinnis received on June 5 and follow-up and additional pictures with substantial work that was completed in June and then threw out with diligent pursuit of the construction for the entire period between June and the date of this hearing, essentially. So there's no reason for Mr. Schenk to have believed that he needed to file something or seek an additional extension or a renewed permit other than what he submitted or requested. And with the limited time I have left, I'm going to just ask Mr. Schenk if he would affirm some of these matters, and if we need to, I'll have Mr. Clemish confirm a few things that we've talked about, and we'll wrap up our presentation of evidence in this case. And if there's questions, we'll certainly be ready to address those. One final thing, just the last thing that was argued here in regard to the expiration for lack of commencement of work. If there had been a suggestion that additional work was necessary prior to June, I want to make sure that we're, or prior to June 3, I want to make sure that we're clear that that was not a practical or a possible option for Mr. Schenk in this situation before I have him affirm those things. I just want to make sure we're clear that I haven't talked about a lot of the things that took place there, but it was the same situation. In order to make sure we have our record complete, it was the weather, the closure of roads, the inability to have the earth removed and sustain any excavations because of the high water table that would have prevented that from taking place, and there was no practical way of accomplishing that 180 days in this situation. With Mr. Schenk's testimony here, I'm just going to simply have him affirm those things that I have said, and if you need to stop and break out anything that I may have misconstrued, not stated correctly, or that's incomplete, please do so. So I'm just going to ask you a few questions. Mr. Schenk, were you able to hear all the things that I presented to the board as facts in your case?
Yes, it was.
Did I misstate anything that I presented?
No, you didn't.
Is there anything that was incomplete that you'd like to make sure we get in the record?
No, just simply, I had spoken with Brian McGinnis by email and did my best to comply, asked for his authority to tell me if I was doing everything right. I asked him to notify me in writing. I wrote him and asked him to notify me in writing immediately if I was, if there was any expirations or violations. Nothing.
Okay, and in regard to that request, was that made on June 5, 2019, by email to Mr. McGinnis where you said, quote, "Any concerns, issues, inadequacy, violations, or expirations, please inform me immediately," quote? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's part of your packet? I do have copies here if you'd like for ease in your reference.
Thank you.
There's also photographs that are attached there. Those are photographs you took at the time, and some of those depict placement of a pig and a few things that would be permanent for your mortality building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is the mortality building that's depicted in that particular set of photographs on your site plan?
It is.
Not well-engineered. And is that where the mortality building is located?
It is.
So in regard to your work on the site, did you feel that you complied with the 180-day requirement for conditional use permit?
Yes, I did.
Is there anything else you think we should make sure that's in the record today?
No.
One last thing I want to address. Did you communicate with Mr. Rob Clemish in regard to whether you felt that you were, whether you were, whether there were questions, whether there were questions about your compliance with the requirements for the 180-day commencement in September of 2019?
Yes, I did.
Did you receive a text from Mr. Clemish?
I did.
And you forwarded that to me. That's not in our pack, our packet, I should say, but it's my understanding that he said, Brian, meaning Brian McGinnis, quote, "Has been gone on vacation, and I am not sure that he has looked through all the material." He told the commission that he believed it looked like you were in compliance. Is that correct?
Yes, that is a email exchange.
Okay. And in regard to your interactions with Mr. McGinnis, did he ever tell you at any one time that he had determined that you were out of compliance?
No, he had not. He even went out with the county camera at my invitation and took pictures of his GPS neighbor, and he said everything was fine.
Time. Thank you. All right. Now we're on to the 20-minute complainant rebuttal.
I'm going to try to just be directly responsive to some of the issues that have come up roughly in the same order they were presented. Mr. Donahue asked about which version of 1725 we are working with. You have broad discretion in determining what your ordinances mean, what the remedies are for violation and for expiration. You've already made that determination today and last week in this very same situation. So for those reasons, we would encourage you to make the same decision on this permit that you did this morning. Additionally, too, the issue of timeliness is not sensitive to the issue of what the remedy needs and what you ought to do for a violation or for an expired permit. The appeal isn't timely, so you need not even get into that exercise of defining what authority you have. And as, that determination is going to be subject to a highly deferential standard of review. The second group of issues have to do with, did they commence work? What does it mean to commence work? I would note that the cases cited by Mr. Schenk's counsel are from, not the South Dakota Supreme Court, but they're middle-level or even Supreme Courts from other states, which usually, that's the last line of defense for an attorney. You always want to point at a statute or the ordinances that we're talking about and get to the South Dakota case at some point because that case law has absolutely no bearing on the decision that you need to make or the level of discretion that our court will give to your determination of what it means to commence work and whether Mr. Schenk actually commenced work. We have a statute right at some point. You don't need to look to an Illinois case on a completely unrelated issue. 11261.1 says you get to make the decision. Our legislature has vested that power with you, regardless of what some random case from Illinois has to say. And Mr. Donahue, you know, told you, quote, "Your interpretation makes no sense." Your interpretation does make sense. It's one you've made consistently. You should apply the same interpretation to this case, that it's got to be above-grade site work. It's consistent with ordinary course of dealing in the construction industry, with the historical practices of this county under various administrations, with different beliefs about different issues. That issue has been consistent across the board. You've got to do some work above grade. It's not an attempt to do work. It's not an honest, good-faith effort to do work. It's not, gosh, we tried, and the weather got in the way at the last minute. That's not enough. That's a situation they control when they get the building permit. They made that decision. They need to live with that decision and abide by the rules. Related to that, there's been an assertion that if you affirm the zoning administrator's decision, you are somehow stripping a vested property right and violating Mr. Schenk's due process rights and taking his property right, if you will, without just compensation. It's nonsense. He's not entitled to anything. He is entitled to fair treatment, which he has got. He got, you know, he got his permits. He needs to follow the rules to use those permits. When he doesn't follow the rules, he gives up his right because of his own actions. You haven't taken anything from him. And the remedy isn't to sue you for damages for... And the remedy isn't to sue you for damages for taking his vested property right. Our South Dakota Supreme Court, in a case last Thursday, Huber versus Hanson County, in which I believe Mr. Donahue was the attorney for the applicant in that case, our Supreme Court made absolutely clear that there aren't, there aren't a wide variety of remedies out there when it comes to conditional uses in these permitting proceedings. The sole and exclusive remedy that Mr. Schenk has is under 11-261 and 11-261.1, which is a highly deferential standard of review, and the court can either affirm or reverse you, but the court's not going to get in the relay of facts. There's no just compensation that's owed. There's no claims for violation or stripping away a vested property right. Our Supreme Court has consistently and very recently held what Mr. Schenk's remedies are going to be in this situation. So don't let that scare you. There's been assertions about planning commission hearings, conversations, emails, text messages, and phone calls with commission members, and Mr. Rob Clemish, and Mr. McGinnis, and that's all a lot of smoke. It's a lot of smoke that obscures the very clear issue, and it's an issue that they know. The very final, actual determination was made on October 24th, 2019, by acting zoning administrator, Mr. Vetter. That is the matter they specifically called out in their notice of intent to appeal. That is the decision. Regardless of everything else that might have been going on in the community, whether that actually happened or not, there's a lot of hearsay that's being thrown out there. That's all irrelevant. The decision was made on October 24th, and that is the decision that is here before you to review, whether there's enough evidence to reverse Mr. Vetter's determination. That's the narrow issue before this board. And I would note, it's not relevant under any of the timeframe, but there was an assertion that Mr. Vetter sent out this decision and made no effort to ensure that actual notice was received by Mr. Schenk. I believe the county sent it out by certified mail, and it should be in the record, but it's certified mail received, 7015-1730-0001, 7170-1999. That's a pretty good effort to make sure he got the notice. That's sufficient. There's no, no further efforts that Mr. Vetter was supposed to do. He did his job, made the correct determination, and ought to be upheld by this board. Regarding the timely, the timeliness issue, again, if we're, depending on which, which version of 1903 applies, they're, they're a day late under one reading, other the, under the other reading, they're, they're timely on step one of two. Step one is filing the notice of intent to appeal, which is what Mr. Donahue calls, he himself calls his November 1, 2019 letters, a notice of intent to appeal under section 1903. That very section requires an additional step of filing a full written appeal with the zoning administrator. It wasn't done. It was not done. It's not your fault. That's Mr. Schenk's responsibility to do that. For that reason, the appeal is untimely, and you should not reverse the zoning administrator's Near the end, there was an assertion that Mr. Schenk allegedly had conversations with Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Rob Clemish, I don't know who else, about, am I in violation? Am I doing everything right? What do I need to worry about? And that somehow waives the county's rights or stops you, meaning like, out of justness, you shouldn't be able to take a different position. Timely appeal is what triggers your jurisdiction to act. Jurisdiction isn't wavable. It's not unstoppable, if that's even a word. But it's not something that can be adjusted. Your jurisdiction is your jurisdiction under the ordinances. It's not a wavable, it's not wavable by, by anybody's conduct, it ignores the applicant or the zoning administrator or the state's attorney. And additionally, I would, I would state that there's a, there's a fundamental difference between asking, am I in violation and are my permits expired? They're two different concepts. There's an expiration date by which work must begin. Whether your work is as permitted, whether it's in compliance, that's whether you're in violation of your actual permit. And I don't see evidence in the record that the zoning administrator, Mr. Rob Clemish or anyone else from the county, told Mr. Schenk, hey, don't worry about it. We've made a determination. You, you've done enough that you don't need to do more in order to avoid that 180-day expiration. If that evidence was there, believe me, that'd be the first and last thing Mr. Donahue would talk about. It's not what happened. There's only one actual determination on expiration, and that was by Mr. Vetter on October 24th. They got timely notice of it. They made an attempt to appeal, but they didn't do it in a timely manner. For all of these reasons, whether it's a lack of authority procedurally or substantively, we encourage you to dismiss this appeal and uphold the decision from your zoning administrator. Thank you.
How much time do we have left?
About eight minutes.
It's eight minutes left. Would anybody like to speak for the remainder of the time for the complainants' rebuttal? About eight minutes, you said?
Yeah.
Phil Taft, just quickly, your packet number one for this case, on page 19 of that packet, and before that, the, there are the complaints about, the complaints were based on construction not being performed by the time the building permit expired, simply put. Page 19, description of building permit, 3429, two 1,200 swine and finishing unit. Continuing on, page 21 is the CUP request, three, I forget the number of that one, I'll find it here in a minute, but it's also for two 2,400, or two 1,200 shed barns. The building permit says to proceed in accordance with the CUP and the site plan. Page 19, I'm sorry, page 35, is a picture of the site plan. Two barns, shelter belt, no mortality building. I'm assuming he's going to have one, it's in the CUP. I get that. It's not on the site plan. And then that structure that he built, but was moved around several times and not fixed in a permanent fashion. It's in the current photo as of last week. That structure is still there, modified a little bit, but completed, let me put it that way. Page 38, two barns, drawings, heads, not one. So is it a better barn? I don't know. I don't know exactly what it is. Haven't talked about that, but that's what has been built and not what was approved in the CUP. If the CUP was modified or changed, then you'd have a change, a change hearing, re-admit for CUP. That's the way it works. It's not just a building change and things happen and work orders change. This is a little bit different from that, considering what we're doing with the zoning ordinance and the CUPs. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time is left?
Just over five.
Five minutes left. Would anybody else like to speak on the complainants' rebuttal time? All right, seeing and hearing done, I'll close that portion and move on to the 10-minute permit holders rebuttal. 10 minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess we'll get back into technicalities first on the timeliness of the appeal, to ensure that we have a clean record here. If it's not abundantly clear, we're relying on the version of the Yankton County zoning ordinance as online today. It says that it's updated 12-28-18. You know that we are contesting whether or not amendments to the 2003 version of the ordinance were properly enacted. That issue hasn't really been addressed here because we've been focusing on the issues for the expiration of this permit. But under the version of section 1903 that is online right now, subdivision two specifically requires the notice of intent to appeal, and that is what I call the November 1st letter in this particular case. It then goes on to say, quote, "A full written appeal must be filed with the zoning administrator within five additional working days," end quote. My November 1st letter is a complete appeal. It is sufficient to address all the issues that we are raising, and it covers all the matters that were in the October 24th letter from Mr. Vetter. And there's nothing in your ordinance that says you have to have a separate document that is the, quote, "full written appeal," end quote. Makes no sense that you would require that you have those two steps. You don't have to do a notice of intent if you're going to file the appeal. In this case, we did the notice of intent. It was considered adequate. It was adequate in our eyes. We didn't need to amend it or add anything to it. The zoning administrator immediately treated it as an appeal and started to schedule the hearing with the Board of Adjustment. Now, having said all of that, if you want to interpret that differently, then you need to add language that's not in this document, or you need to have a specific provision that will address this type of thing by providing a form. That's typically how these things are done. Back to the merits here, very quickly, again, I've just gone through things. I'm not seeing any argument that was presented when these complaints were actually filed. It was acted on by Mr. Vetter, saying that this building is not in compliance with the building permit. That's not in his October 24th letter. It's not part of this appeal. So let's get back to what really is at issue here, and that's the allegation that there has been an expiration of both the building permit and the conditional use permit. I'm not going to reargue that issue in regard to how you need to consistently use the term "work" for both building permits and conditional use permits. If you have questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. One thing I will point out is that there is no case in South Dakota that directly addresses what the word "work" means. That's why we have to resort to dictionary definitions. Under the dictionary definition, as used by other cases, which we've merely brought in as illustration, it's clear that it is not the specific term that may have been used either in ethanol or other specific parts of the construction industry, but is in fact very broad. And as you know from the case that I handed out from North Carolina, they use the dictionary. There are thousands of cases across the country where courts have used the dictionary for a common term like that. Our Supreme Court in South Dakota has done the same. They just happen to have done it on words other than, quote, "work," end quote. So using those cases is not unusual. It's not appropriate in any mean, at all, in any means at all. I want to go back briefly to one other allegation here in regard to the, the permit expiring. You've heard a lot of legal argument without any citation to authority, telling you that this is not taking a property right. Had we known that that was going to be rebutted, we certainly would have provided that ourselves to establish the authority in our favor that says it is a property right. It is a taking. I will tell you that unless Mr. Peterson's client's petition to intervene, if there's an appeal, they're not going to be named as parties, and they're not going to be paying if you have to provide just compensation because of the taking of my client's property. So I take that very carefully, if you're going to take that argument at all. And when it comes down to the issues of fairness and whether or not there was a failure to get something specifically in writing or specifically have a determination made, it wasn't for a lack of trying. Consistently, back and forth, asking, are we in compliance? Do we need to do something else? Here's a contingent building permit. Can we get a building permit? Don't tell me that we failed to ask for a final determination. All the way through, this has happened. And when we get to the point where the letter finally comes out, whether it was done by certified mail or not, the argument was, look, all you could, all you had to do is pick up the phone and answer my question in the mail that I sent to you previously, and tell us what the issue is, how you're defining work, how you're defining commencement. There's a problem, we'll deal with it, and if we need to, we'll give you a new building permit application. I'm talking about that. I'm not saying that he didn't follow through. There's no requirement that it be sent by certified mail. What I'm saying is, it was sent out by mail. Instead of picking up the phone, we could have immediately addressed it. We could have addressed it before he made his decision on October 24th, had we known he was doing it. And if we had the opportunity, we would have gone through all this stuff and said, okay, if there's a problem, let's fix it. Now, all of this, marching this up the hill to march this down again, is great, but the problem here is, if you're going to rule on this conditional use permit and put us back through that process and put us into that uncertainty, there's significant dollars at risk here. And I can't put that any more lightly. The bottom line is that the issues that we're talking about here are more than those that would just simply impact people who are potentially subject to what we call externalities from these projects. Those things are decided when you set your requirements for a conditional use permit, when you establish as a policy and then put it into an ordinance, what it is that you require for approval of these kind of projects. Those things are not going to change, but what I'm concerned about is any delay in having to go through that entire process again and the potential for an appeal to cause significant damage to my clients here. But having said all of that, again, it's easy. Just take 1725 as it's written and set forth on your website. It only applies to the building permit. It doesn't apply to the conditional use. If there is an expiration, which we vigorously deny, at most, you must require a building permit, and that would be a renewed building permit going forward. So we would ask that if you are going to make a motion and find as required under section 1903, to affirmatively make a decision by motion setting forth your reasons, that your reasons would include whether you're interpreting this to, to have an expiration of a conditional use permit or just a building permit, and exactly what's necessary going forward. In regard to the other argument here, that the commencement of the work was not adequate because of the lack of actual construction or work that would have been set forth in the permit, and then the discussion about the two buildings, and that that didn't happen, non-secular. There was construction. It was ongoing, and again, it wasn't part of Mr. Vetter's decision. So had Mr. Vetter set forth in the October 24th letter a statement saying that your building is not in compliance with the building site plan, and therefore you did not commence work under section 1725, that would be different. Your appeal rights here, folks, your authority is to put yourself into his shoes, but you can't issue a new decision on new facts without having given us the opportunity to address that. That wouldn't be fair. So the bottom line is, even though you may want to say that that would be a reason for it, if it's not in his letter, you can't base your decision to affirm his determination on something outside of what he set forth in there. Unless it is based on a different interpretation of the zoning ordinance, I'll give you that. But we're asking that you interpret it differently, because it's implicit in his decision that something else other than what we consider to be work had to have started. And again, I go back to this, this issue here, that it's fundamental fairness. If we keep asking, is there something that we haven't done properly? Is there something additional that needs to be done? And then to come and have this decision without addressing those questions is just unfair. What we want is the opportunity to get this back where it should have been. And if it's necessary for a renewed building permit, that's fine. We've offered that, we continue to offer that. If it's something else, that wouldn't be appropriate. And so we would specifically ask that you reverse the decision of the zoning administrator in regard to the conditional use permit being expired, and then make your decision on the building permit. We think that that also has not expired, because the common law and our canons of construction for this type of a situation where you've got a word like the word "work" being ambiguous and subject to very striking differences in interpretation, use the dictionary.
Time.
Unless you have any questions, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to the 30-minute Board of Adjustment discussion. Would the Board like to ask any specific questions? I'm on the second packet, 23, where it referenced Mr. Schenk was banned from the building. Anybody want to, did that end up, was that true? I mean, did that affect his ability? Was he actually banned?
He was banned from being in the zoning office for a period of time, and he was not allowed to interact with the, at that time-
And he was not allowed to interact with the, at that time, the zoning administrator. And I think it carried through from Pat Gerhke to Brian McGinnis, or was it just Brian McGinnis?
No, it was just the secretary of charge at the time, I think.
Who was it that said he was banned, I guess?
Pat would have been in the secretary of charge.
Who, the current one or the one prior? What was the name?
Denise.
Okay. She, she, did she call you and say you were banned, or what happened?
No, I walked in. She said she, I could be there and she could talk to me.
Okay.
So, I'm not, who can, who can talk to me? Maybe it's Gary. But you came here on the 21st of October. You've gone to, what, seven different files? Pretty in-depth files?
Yeah, they were pretty in-depth. And basically, I spent those first few days. That's pretty much what, what I was tasked to do. And so it was all day, each one of those days, pretty much, so.
So you, you got that, those letters all written in, in three days?
Pretty much, yeah. The third day, the 24th, yeah, is when I wrote them.
I hear a lot of references to Mr. Ross Denherter. What, what's his role in, I guess, this whole thing? I know he's referenced a bunch of times. Like, what, what is his part? Is he, because he's also the city attorney, and we sit with him on some other boards. So what, I guess, what's his role in this?
During a period of time this summer when I was not available, Mr. Denherter was representing and assisting Mr. Schenck. Really, he was also working with some of the other permit holders who were in a similar situation.
Okay.
And you'll see in that correspondence, he also copied another attorney, David Domina, who was also assisting in regard to those with common interests in these issues.
Okay.
As I recall, when sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board, when Mr. Schenck applied for maybe the first building, it was probably the most in-depth application that we'd had, maybe 300 pages of references and information. And is, is there anything in any of those documents that you would change going forward to apply for a new building permit?
No.
No?
Just so we're clear on the record, his statement was no. And I'm going to have him come up to the microphone from now on to answer. That did remind me one other thing. I think I misspoke earlier when I talked about the October 4th, 2019 Plan Commission vote on Mr. Schenck's permits. I think I said it was four to zero. It was actually four to one with Mr. Healy voting against the motion.
What day was that on?
Friday, October 4th.
I don't think I was at that meeting, so there's probably a...
That was the special meeting of the Planning Commission. It was a Friday evening. You couldn't be there.
I wasn't there, so.
The conditional use permit for this was originally a 4,800 head. Is that correct? Was, it was not? Okay.
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
It was always under 1,000.
It was always a 2,400, okay.
Yeah, I think it was 2,400 head, just.
Okay. Got it. If we look at the heading and the title of Section 1725, it says expiration of building permits, conditional uses and variances.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to address the November 1st letter.
What, where?
From Mr. Donahoe.
What packet number and what page?
I'm on packet number, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
Page 11.
Okay.
And this is to address Mr. Peterson's concern of, of our authority to hear this. The, the final paragraph says, "If however, the request for a renewed building..." So the, you know, there's two, three pages above this talking about where they stated their concerns. "If however, the request for a renewed building permit is denied, or you give us notice that you will take no action in response to this letter, we will take appropriate action to protect Mr. Schenck's interests. Any appeal to the Board of Adjustment will be made only to avoid default or any claim of waiver of appeal rights. We understand this to fulfill our obligation to respond to your October 24th, 2019 letter. Please notify us if Yankton County believes otherwise. Thank you." I guess I'd like to input from others on how, how you read that. My, how I read that is, this is the intent and any, "We will take appropriate action to protect Schenck's interests." So I guess I'm questioning if, if a written appeal, if this constitutes the written appeal or if this is the notice of intent to appeal. And it is in bold, "Finally, please consider this as notice of intent to appeal," right above that paragraph.
So are you thinking they never actually submitted their full appeal? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, I think, Mr. Donahoe, I think you stated that you consider this the intent, or the appeal.
That's correct. If I could address it, I could just explain it. The, the final paragraph, we had, it addresses the fact that we had set forth a request for a renewed building permit. It had never been acted on. And so if it was going to be denied, then we would need to appeal that denial. Or if there was notice that there was going to be no action taken in response to the letter, then we would take appropriate action to protect Mr. Schenck's interests. In other words, we would include any appeal, in any appeal, the fact that we had sought these building permits, they had never been addressed, and that we were going to appeal that and make that a part of the basis for the appeal. It's our understanding that they treated this as actually being the, the appeal itself, which we were finding. In regard to the, the phrase where it says, "You give us notice that you will take no action," they didn't give us notice. What they said was, "We're just going to treat this as an appeal. We need to set a hearing date."
And when did you get that response?
I'd have to look. It was a phone call to start with in regard to availability for hearing dates. It would have been after the November 5th letter. November 5th, we, we provided by hand delivery a contingent building permit application addressing the, the invalidity of the 2006 amendments. And I know it was after that.
How many of these hog barns does your client have, or the family have in Yankton County now? Like, the total number? Like, applied for, built, being built, in operation? Do, do we have a total number?
Total of five.
Total of five?
But when you say family, I mean, Mr. Schenck has a son who independently has his own permit and his own...
Sure, sure. So you have a total of five permits, or, you know, I guess, to include, you know, ones that are already built and in the process of being built? It's a total number of five?
There's two, two finishers and two, two, two operating and two going up. So there's two operating, those are the finishers.
A total of four?
Two that are going up, a total of four. You have applications, there are some applications.
So how many total applications, you know, constructed, in constructing and applied for? What's the total number?
There are two more in the zoning office. There are two more applications in the zoning office for a total of seven.
So a total of seven. And then what's the timeframe? Like, how, how long have they been? Did he start applying two years ago, up until recently, or they've been all in the last year?
I don't know how this relates to this appeal, but the...
Well, I'm just curious if, you know, there's seven or eight of them. You know, it's probably unreasonable to consider what the amount of work that you'd have to do to get all of these, you know, done in, within a year. If you've applied for, I guess, at seven, seven barns, has it been in the last couple of years? I'm just trying to get the number.
Well, again, I'm not sure where we're going with this, but for the purpose of this building permit, he applied for it on September 18th of 2018. And same thing, because you fill out that application with the conditional use permit, that was September 18th of 2018. Of course, you go through the approval process for the conditional use. There's a section on the actual conditional use and variance application that has a date of denial on it, which is, as I understand it, the zoning administrator saying, "You have to get a conditional use. You can't just get a building permit. It's not a permitted use." So the date of the application then becomes the date of denial, and that's all on, on the packet.
Thank you. Did you have something, Joe?
Yeah, just going back to the, the notice versus is this an appeal or, or whatnot. And, and so what we're, we're here today is discussing and acknowledging that it's, it's possible that our zoning administrator can make mistakes and we can overturn or not. So is it not also possible that they could make a mistake? They didn't file, or they did not respond to this? But I guess, just looking down the road, if this is in, in court or sitting in front of a judge, is the argument going to be made, "There was no, no written appeal." And, and Mr. Donahoe's argument right now is that, well, they were not, there was no written response or no response about this. And there's also arguments, you know, throughout everything that we did not hear back, so we proceeded. I guess my concern is, there's no, no appeal. There's an intent to appeal. And I want an input, I guess, on what others think, or how you interpret that.
Let's get Mr. Peterson's opinion to get both sides. Would you care to respond, Mr. Peterson? How much, what are we doing on, how are we on time?
16.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I think it's clear that the November 1 letter is providing notice that, hey, we intend to appeal. We are not actually appealing. We intend to appeal. If you don't give us our renewed permit, or don't do this, that, or the other thing, then we're going to take action and actually appeal. And, I mean, it's future tense verbs, and it's not just being worded nitpicky. They're telling you, hey, we want our way on this renewed permit application, and we're going to appeal. Here's our notice of what we're going to do. And they didn't do it. They didn't do it. They need to give notice and then actually follow through on that. And there's a little additional time so that you can get your paperwork together and turn it from something other than a notice to an actual appeal. And I think Commissioner Healy is absolutely right, that it's, it's future tense. It's speaking about what we're going to do if you as a county don't do certain things. And then they didn't follow through on it. Again, that's not your responsibility. It is Mr. Schenck's responsibility to comply with those deadlines. His failure to do so makes this procedurally an easy decision. And with respect to, well, you scheduled our appeal, so you must have determined it to be an appeal. We argued the same thing with Judge Byrne. Again, the, the deadlines are different, but the concept is the same. Did you file an appeal on time? We got a hearing in front of the Board of Adjustment, and the board said, "Sorry, you didn't, we're not recognizing your appeal. We're dismissing your appeal because you didn't file it on time." And Judge Byrne agreed with that. The fact that this has been scheduled to be heard is not the same as a determination that, yes, you have actually filed an appeal. It's a, it's a determination. It was scheduled after the appropriate point in time. And just like happened in that case, the Judge Byrne decided it's the same thing here. We're at a board hearing, and the board can say, "I'm sorry, you didn't follow the rules. You didn't comply with the procedural requirements to invoke our authority in our jurisdiction." So I would encourage you to decide the case on that basis and/or the merits.
So, so when you take that, that angle one step farther and say, "Okay, if I drive, in fact, on, on the way driving to my house, there's a house that's been under construction for probably three, maybe four years, never, never seems to advance, doesn't do anything to enhance the community, are we supposed to go out and, and, and withdraw there and make them apply for a new building permit because they haven't completed their construction? Are we supposed to do that to everything in the county that...
I think that the proper process is what was followed here, that you have concerned members of the community that file a complaint and ask the zoning administrator to enforce the rules and the ordinances in the permit that was acted upon in a way that Mr. Schenck disagrees with. And then he didn't follow the proper rules to get the issue before the board today.
So every farm project that, you know, typically they get started in one year and they might finish it in two or three years, they're all on, they're all, subject to being, in, having a problem, right? That's what you're saying. We should get them all.
The rules require actual, if there's a complaint, that's what the rules...
And if we just go get hog ones, is that a problem?
Well, I've always found slippery slope arguments to be a little lacking in substance, which is what this is. Whether you get complaints from...
Your opinion?
That, that's fine. I hate to have opinions. But if you have actual complaints from neighbors to say, "Hey, look, this guy has a building permit to do this thing. He either didn't start in 180 or he didn't finish within two years, pull the building permit." And the right action is yes. And then it's, you apply for a renewal. There's not an additional cost in that situation. But if nobody's complaining, there's nothing to trigger the zoning administrator to take action. So I don't think it's incumbent upon the board to have some mandate or mission to go scour the county for everything that's behind schedule. That's not what the ordinances contemplate. It's to be responsive to actual complaints.
Just do it for hogging.
If you do it, you do it when your constituents are, bring a complaint that the rules aren't being followed, and your zoning administrator finds that to have merit. That's when you ought to take action.
Mr. State's Attorney, what's your opinion on the, what Commissioner Healy had talked about for a full, full appeal versus not a full appeal? For, what were you on, number five, page 11?
Sorry, 5H11.
Uh, do you want to go over that one more time?
No, no. Are you referencing, Joe, and I was going to, I just was reading it, under the 1903 appeals, and you were referencing, I believe, subparagraph number two? Is that the one you were referencing?
Correct.
So when you read subparagraph number two, it states in there that "Any person aggrieved by a decision of the zoning administrator shall file a written intent to appeal with the zoning administrator within 10 working days after the building permit has been issued in accordance with Section 1731." That's the posting on the, for the building permit. That's what 1731 is. So honestly, there's, there's a question of whether this even, provision even applies under the case in this situation. But my position would be that we listened to it and decided on the merits, where this goes, who knows, and, and have this taken care of at least at this time. And it's something we don't have to address and be sent back in case we didn't dismiss accordingly. I know the Burns case, Judge Byrne's case, my understanding, when it was appealed, when the building permit was appealed, I believe it, it was like 15 days past the time. And I don't remember the judge determining whether mail was, was a question, whether there was personal service or anything, because it was past the time. But my position would be that reading the provision that we're talking about, that's applying to a building permit being issued in 10 days after the issuance of a building permit, not in this case where we're appealing the decision of a zoning administrator. So... So, my decision would be that we would decide the merits of the case today before the Board with the information provided.
If I could just, I would concur with that. And I was going to point out...
What do we have for time?
About nine thirty?
Nine, nine minutes.
I was just going to point out that that exact language does seem, once I was able to pull it up and look at it, does seem to apply to a completely different situation than we have here. And there's also provisions in there that would require things such as the zoning administrator being required to set forth the papers constituting the record, things like that. It appears that those things are going to conflate with in this particular case. So, we've got notice to the landowners. I don't think there's anything here that would take it outside the normal course of appeals here. I would note that it also requires, "The zoning administrator shall present the decision to the Board of Adjustment for review." That's item number seven under 1903. I think you have authority to proceed as you find appropriate in regard to substantial compliance with your appeal provisions here. And I don't think that anything that was done here is going to remove your authority either under the case that Mr. Peterson has talked about that was decided by Judge Byrne or any other cases. And I would specifically make reference to matters such as where a county commission is also the Board of Adjustment, like there is here in this county under your zoning ordinance. And you have certain acts that are taken at the same time under notices that combine actions by both of them. There's nothing that requires you to have a separate meeting after that. You can have a meeting of the Board of Adjustment and a meeting of the County Commission at the same time, as long as you give the appropriate notice that indicates both boards will act. Same type of thing here, as long as you have the authority to conduct the appeal and within the reasonable time as established by your other rules, there's been an action seeking to appeal. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I can give you citations to cases if you want, but this is not something that's been decided by the South West Supreme Court or any certain court. I'm aware.
Any other questions from anyone on the Board?
I guess I still interpret two a little different. I mean, I, I see that after the building permit's been issued, but it leads off, "Any person aggrieved by a decision of the zoning administrator." That's pretty broad. You know, it's not specific to a building permit, I don't think, until, I mean, it's, could be written differently, I guess. Because I, I, when I read that, I, I read it as any decision, I guess.
But then the second part, Joe, then references something that's not applicable to the case and using that as a timeframe. So, my, my position would be it's ambiguous, or it's confusing, or it doesn't necessarily set forth the intent probably at the time. So, my position would be then we decide it on the merits and don't base it on that.
How much time is left?
Five forty.
If I had an opportunity, I would first address that in particular interpretation.
Come on up and, did you want to say something to Mr. Donahoe?
The housekeeping matter, I forgot to put our binder in.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to give him a few minutes since he hasn't as much time. And if there's time left, I'll allow you to. Thank you.
I would, I would disagree with, with the reading. If, if 1903-2 isn't applicable to this, then what, what is? How is your appellate jurisdiction invoked? If there isn't a way to appeal the zoning administrator's decision, if it's under some other path, it's their burden to prove that they've done that, that they, that they are here under a grant of authority and that you have jurisdiction over this. That's their burden to prove that. It's their apparent or alleged appeal. And if you're not convinced that they've met whatever deadline might be applicable, then you don't have jurisdiction. Number two, under that, even if that language about the building permit has been issued in accordance with 17.31 period. So, that, that is the deadline to file your notice of intent to appeal. So, even if Mr. Clemish is correct, that that deadline for filing a notice of intent to appeal is applicable. The next sentence is going to be applicable to any other type of appeal. Here, the issue isn't whether they filed their notice of intent within 10 days. They did. Nobody's arguing that. It's the second part of it, and it simply and nakedly states, "A full written appeal must be filed with the zoning administrator within five additional working days." So, whatever their deadline was to file a notice of intent, we're not arguing they didn't meet it. After filing the notice of intent, they have five additional working days to file an actual appeal, and they didn't do that. All they said is, "We're going to. We will if you don't." And they didn't actually file an appeal. And if this isn't applicable, which section is, and how did they meet that? That's their burden, and you can hold them to that burden. If they don't convince you, you can, and I'd suggest that a record ought to be made. You're entitled to a deferential standard of review on this timeliness issue, on what's required to perfect an appeal, what work means. If you don't make a determination, the court isn't going to be able to give you a deferential standard of review. It's going to be sent back down for a record. So, I think now is a great time to make the record on the procedural timeliness and the work substantive issues. So, all of it's there, and we're not back here in the backup again, because that's already happened in this county before. So, I think that would be decided today. Whatever that decision is, it's your decision and your power to do it. That way, we have a complete record for a reviewing court. Thank you.
If I may, I could just...
How much time do we have?
Three.
Three minutes.
All right, I'll succinctly answer that. SDCL 11-2-55 fills the gaps and provides you with authority. If you don't have it specifically set forth in your ordinance, the quote from the provision in this statute is simply this. "The appeal shall be taken within a reasonable time as provided by the rules of the Board of Adjustment by filing with the officer for whom the appeal is taken and with the Board of Adjustment a notice of appeal specifying the grounds of the appeal." That's what we did in our November first letter. So, they're going to argue that it's not officially titled as a notice of appeal because we used the language from 1903, calling it a notice of intent to appeal. But it contained all the information necessary to bring the appeal. It was considered appropriate. It was done within a reasonable time, and therefore complies with the statute. And if there's an ambiguity in your ordinance, you always go back to the statute, which will control. I don't have anything further, unless you have questions. The other thing I need to do is I forgot to make sure that we made the same record in this proceeding as we did in the previous one. Your packet has been taken by our office and individually numbered, and then placed in a binder here. And that way, we can refer to anything like that November first letter, if there's a future appeal, by page number. And so, I would ask that we be allowed to submit that as our record in this case. And then, one other quick thing in regard to the cases that I cited in the Johnson matter and gave you copies of. We would also ask that they be incorporated by reference along with the additional case presented here. Is there any objection to that?
No, that's standard, isn't it?
Thank you. Just for the record, that binder also contains another copy of the 2003 version of the zoning ordinance, which is also numbered in case there was any need to refer to that. That would be the matter in addition to your packet.
Thank you. Any more questions from the Board? How much time do we have? Sherri, how much time?
Sorry, 45 seconds.
Forty-five seconds.
Quickly, if we can, there's a, this handout that you had. There was an email from Mr. Schenk to Mr. McGinnis, June 5th, asking about the construction. There's a response from Mr. McGinnis, July 10th, but that's blank. If you know what that response contains.
That would be in your packet. My understanding is that was simply forwarding the same email back. So, there was no actual response. It was just to provide those pictures back to Mr. Schenk.
Correct.
Is that a fair, that's a fair summary. There was no response. There's no words to go with that response.
Thank you.
And confirming that the email had been sent. I'm sorry, that was a photo link.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Any other discussion?
I know there's here, he said, she said, there's some emails. In, in every discussion I had with Mr. McGinnis over this timeframe, he stated to me that, that he felt that there may have been enough documentation for an argument on one of Mr. Schenk's barn, and that the other barn, and I don't remember which one was which. I think his words would be, "A tough row to hoe." And he stated to me that, that that had been relayed to Mr. Schenk in many conversations.
Sherri Don, anything else? I guess at this time I'd entertain a motion.
Well, to stay, to stay consistent, I would make a motion that we overturn the zoning administration's officer's decision.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes, for the overturn.
Healy?
No.
Los?
No.
Clemish?
No. Motion does not pass. Decision is upheld. All right, let's go. You want to take a 10-minute break?
Move for a 10-minute recess.
Entertain a motion for a 10-minute break.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. 10-minute break.
...document in a sufficient time period, I can tell you that in the absence of a required form or a specific rule that says, "For an appeal of a determination other than a building permit, you must do a notice of intent and then follow it with a written letter." Your recourse or what you do to determine what does a sufficient time period is, is to go to the statute, which says a reasonable time. And then going back to the initial threshold question, which is whether it requires that you do both a notice of intent and a written notice. That's only for building permits on their initial issuance. And even if that did apply, there's nothing that requires that you have two separate documents if the administrator who receives it determines that that is, in fact, considered to be sufficient notice for an appeal. He's got authority to interpret the ordinance, just like you do. If you decide that this is not a sufficient notice of appeal, I would argue we still have appropriate time because it would be a reasonable period of time under the circumstances. And we can just simply file this thing again and do this all over one more time. I wouldn't think that would be necessary. It's clear to me that there are sufficient grounds to interpret that notice or that actual letter indicating an appeal. And our acceptance of the hearing date would be sufficient to establish the notice of appeal for the Board of Adjustment to have jurisdiction. So, having said all that, I know I have very little time left, but I need to do the same thing just procedurally to make sure that I have everything in the record and have Mr. Schenk confirm this. We didn't get into details. If there's any question, please feel free to talk to Mr. Clemish. I'm sure he'll verify that it was his understanding that Mr. Schenk was in compliance under that text. Not trying to, I'm trying to make this as short and as brief as possible. I don't think it's necessary for him to testify, but if we need to do that, we're certainly willing to have him just verify that. With that, I'll have Mr. Schenk just simply come up. Mr. Schenk, were you able to hear everything that I presented to the Board?
Yes, I did.
Is there anything that I said factually that's not correct?
No.
Is there anything that I've left out that should be noted and made sure that we have discussed in this record?
I, I think it needs to be pointed out that the complaint letters came in in June.
July.
July. The client records came in July, and Mr. Better comes online in October. And you leave all that time available to build in no direction. When we were begging for direction, it just seems terribly unfair.
And in regard to my previous representation of the text message from Mr. Clemish, or any discussions you had with the interim zoning administrator, Mr. McGinnis, did I misstate anything?
No.
And we would like to have those incorporated into the record along with materials in our binder for permit number 3428. Unless you have anything for, we would conclude our, our presentation.
Thank you. How much time is left?
Two minutes, 20 seconds.
Two minutes left. Would anyone, would anyone care to speak for the remaining two minutes? Seeing or hearing none? Go ahead and close that portion and move on to the 20-minute complainant rebuttal.
Thank you. I will attempt to be exceedingly brief and just touch on some new issues. Regarding the authority of this Board and Mr. Better to take the actions, there's, there's many, many places to find that in your ordinances. The first is Section 1725, which plainly calls out its applicability to conditional uses, building permits and variances, and what the consequences are. And we've talked about that thoroughly. You have the ability to interpret that, apply that, define the words in it, and then determine whether there's compliance and what the remedy outcome ought to be. But additionally, under Section 1727, it states, I'll just read the, there's two sentences. The last sentence says, "Use, arrangement, or construction at variance with that authorized shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance and punishable as provided by Section 2303 of this ordinance." So, whenever there's construction that's at variance, the building permit, use that's at variance, it's not compatible with what's been authorized by a conditional use permit. If somebody's doing something that's normally a permitted act, but they're doing it in a way that crosses the line. There are a variety of situations where parties can either build, act, or use their property in a way that's just not authorized. That's what we have here. We have construction that's too late and not in compliance with those requirements. That triggers then the broad powers and authority that are set forth in 2303, as that statute stated, or as that ordinance stated. And it states that someone who's in violation shall be subject to any of the following. And there's a long list of, of things, from fines to stop work orders to a variety of things, including the last paragraph that states, "In case any building or structures erected, constructed, reconstructed, altered, repaired, converted, or maintained, or any building, structure, or land is used in violation of this ordinance, the zoning administrator or designee, as determined by the county commission, may institute any appropriate action or proceedings to prevent such unlawful erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, conversion, maintenance, or use." "They can take action to restrain, correct, or abate such violations." "The zoning administrator can take actions to prevent the occupancy of the building, structure, or the land." "The zoning administrator can take actions to prevent any illegal act, conduct, business, or use in or about such premises." That is broad discretion that, not when the goalposts get moved, but when the rules are very clear about what Mr. Schenk needs to do and when he needs to do it. If he doesn't do it, there are consequences to that. He's simply being held accountable for his choices and not following the rules. And the statute 17, or the ordinance of 1725, 1727, and the broad powers set forth in 2303 absolutely give Mr. Better the authority to do what he did. And they give you the authority to affirm his action. So, it's your decision what to do here. And I'll just leave you with, again, a Section 11-261.1 gives you great authority in insulation... in insulation from appellate review as to what's required to perfect an appeal and whether that was done, the timeliness of the appeal, your authority, interpretation of the ordinances, definitions of words in the ordinances, what remedy and relief ought to be imposed, and any factual determinations related to any of those things. Our legislature was very clear in 2016 when it changed the law and gave you an even higher level of deferential review. This is your decision to make, it's not mine, it's not Mr. Donahue's. It's your decision to make and it is very, very hard for it to get reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time is left?
Fifteen, fifteen and a half.
Would anybody else care to speak at this time for the complainants rebuttal? All right, seeing or hearing none, close that portion and move on to the 10-minute permit holder rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you again. In regard to the rebuttal, I need to just make sure that we're clear. That was mainly a recitation and application of the ordinance and some statutes. The facts, I think, speak for themselves in that Mr. Schenck was very clearly trying to be diligent and trying to actually follow the rules. And to suggest that he is now going to be subject to some punishment or some consequences for a violation begs the question of what are the rules? I would address the claim that Section 1725 applies to expiration of conditional use permits and simply state that Section 2403 specifically prohibits this board from using that subtitle, which mentions conditional uses, as incorporating an expiration for failure to commence work on a conditional use permit or for that matter to complete it. Section 2403 says, it's got a subtitle itself, it says, "Section 2403, purpose of subtitles. The subtitles appearing in connection with the foregoing sections are inserted simply for convenience, to serve the purpose of an index, and they shall be wholly disregarded by any person, officer, court or other tribunal in construing the terms and provisions of this ordinance." Then we go to Section 1725, we've already talked about how that works. Assuming that the language in the ordinance that's set forth on your website is correct, it only talks about the building permit expired. Circling back to the actions of Mr. Schenck in the period of time at issue, he did diligently work towards getting construction started when one would expect normal construction activities to be available and could take place based on past weather and road conditions. This spring was extremely unusual. As we argued in the initial permit hearing for Mr. Johnson, it's clear to me that common law would apply here to automatically extend. In other words, it would not allow this body or Mr. Better or anyone on behalf of the county to enforce a period that is within that time when it was impractical or impossible for Mr. Schenck or anyone else to make this kind of construction happen. So, without the need for an extension, without the need for him doing something affirmative, he would have been in a position where he could not have been in violation of Section 1725 for that period, at least well into when he was doing actual construction when it was dry later in the summer. When we had the complaints filed in July and then shortly after in August in particular, when it was finally dry enough to really get the work going, that's when he was in fact in full compliance prior to the expiration. So, I implore you, if you think that my interpretation of the law is incorrect, if you have a question about which of the two competing laws is correct, talk to your state's attorney. Ask for his advice and his interpretation of whether or not a building permit like this, and in particular a conditional use permit, can expire. It's our position a conditional use permit will never expire under a provision like this. It's unconstitutional, we've already argued that. Mr. Peterson talked in the previous hearing about this recent case decided by the South Coast Supreme Court. Problem with his description is that really what they decided was that when a person brings an appeal under the wrong form, but throws in a provision that also makes reference to the right form of appeal, the Supreme Court will bend over backwards in that situation and allow the appeal to go forward, even though the entirety of what was presented to the trial court in that case was about the wrong kind of writ, a writ of prohibition. And in regard to that holding, I would submit that not only applies in this situation because of this claim that we didn't do a proper notice of appeal, but furthermore because it provides that there's going to be a multitude of actions that would be combined with any appeal of an adverse decision in this case. And they will include not only the claims that we have addressed in our letter addressing the validity of the 2006 amendments to the zoning ordinance, which if proven, as we very likely will, are going to bring you right back to requiring a building permit for this anyway, to grandfathered use under that situation. There's no moratorium or anything that can be applied later that will affect this property. So having said all of that, in regard to this situation, you would, I agree with Mr. Peterson, you would have the authority to interpret your ordinances to say that A, there is no conditional use expiration, and B, there's no building permit expiration under the conditions that were affected and that were impacting this particular site and that this site at a minimum had sufficient construction and was in fact not subject to violation of Section 1725 in this case. Alternatively, if there was a violation, we've already submitted applications and it would be appropriate to simply say that if there had been a technical violation, the building permit should have been, should have been accepted. It should be authorized for Mr. Better to execute new building permits as a renewed permit under Section 1725 and allow the construction to be completed for, in this case, when the construction, I believe, the construction was completed on this barn. So on this barn, we're completely done. The usage then just simply be allowed to proceed unimpeded. He should be allowed to populate the barn and continue to use that particular site under the conditional use permit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I believe I've covered everything.
Where are we at for time?
Three minutes, 40 seconds.
Did anyone else want to speak on this, this time? Remaining three, did you want to use your last remaining three minutes?
No, I just, available for questions.
Okay. All right, anybody care to speak on this for the last three minutes? All right, seeing or hearing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion and move on to the 30-minute board of adjustment discussion. Anyone on the board have questions you'd like to ask? Don, Joe, Sherry?
Just curious, which picture is which? 14 or 24?
The bottom one would be 24.
These photo, this is just cut off from the top one, is that correct? There, it's not a, a separate photo?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
And just so we're clear, I'm seeing some pictures that are behind that. I did double check, the June 5th pictures are just strictly the two pages immediately behind the email.
These one?
Right, the later, those other pictures that follow behind it, those are obviously much later. They just got mixed up in that packet, I apologize. I tried to separate those with the binder that you have for this hearing because I caught that in between the two hearings. The ones that are in the binder should be just the email and the two pages of pictures behind it.
Thank you. What did you say the dates were on these photos? That you, you have, these two right here?
They were taken on June 5th.
There's another set of photos on page two and three, I think on packet four, that they're similar, but they're taken on June 15th? Do you?
Those are taken by Mr. McGinnis.
Okay.
With the GPS information on the county's camera that are set off to the side. Those are all from Mr. McGinnis.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
And just so the record is clear, he came out to the site, took those pictures at the invitation of Mr. Schenck. And again, that was based on the June 5th email inquiry saying, please tell us if we're not in compliance.
And I know Mr. McGinnis had told me that he was onsite there and took those photos. I have one question while you're up here. There's an email from Mr. Schenck, I lost it. From Mr. Schenck to Ms. Jessica Atkinson at the zoning office, October 11th, showing a picture, it says, "The building is complete, thank you, Carl Schenck." And it shows a picture of a building with exposed rafters. Curious if there's any explanation to?
It's one exposed rafter on the end, we were sure of one piece of tin that blew off. So it's at the very far end, the rafters are not exposed. When I sent that to Jessica.
In thinking about things that we probably could do better, Gary, as, as I'm thinking about going forward with this, when we rewrite our plans, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be easier for the customer to understand if you said a date specific instead of five working days? Because when you tell me five working days, I, is the 24th a day? Is the 21st a day? I, I'm not sure, but if you said the 27th, it, it'd be eliminate a whole lot of legal issues. Not that I want you guys to start it.
And you're referencing maybe the old thing Mitch Peterson was referencing. But I mean, is it always better to be more specific? It's your chance, but that's. Take care of all contingencies we can think of. It, it would be nice if we could do that. Very difficult.
On packet two, page 65, the DNR letter from October 21st, is this, is this facility in common ownership with another facility within one mile?
No, it is not. That was confusion on the part of the DNR based on the property records. Mr. Schenck's son Carl II has the other barn that they're talking about that would be within one mile. And that's a completely separate operation, completely separate nutrient management plan, it's a separate conditional use permit. And.
It's not subject to this appeal today.
Right, it's not subject to the appeal.
It's in your, it's in your packet, that's why I asked.
And to the extent that there were questions from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, those were addressed.
What says the department consulted with the Attorney General and therefore you have significant and dominant ownership interest in this property?
It was asking that question based on the property records and that was addressed. There was a copy to the county commissioners. I should say, a copy of the letter from the DNR to the county commissioners. I assume why it's in this packet, it has nothing to do with this appeal.
If it deals with this, does it deal with this building then and one that's not owned by Mr. Schenck within a mile? Because it, it sounds like it would deal, it would concern this one because DNR is saying that the department requires this facility to be permitted.
The DNR has resolved all their concerns.
Okay.
They do not consider this to be subject to the common ownership requirements under the general permit, which are the same as under your zoning ordinance. There is no common ownership in this situation.
Do you guys, could you guys provide us with the letter?
Sure.
For that? Because, you know, me reading this letter, that's not what I understand from reading that.
That's for Section 26.
Okay, different section?
Right.
Okay, got it.
That's for one from two barns to one.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from anyone on the board? How are we doing for time?
Nineteen.
There's a few photos of your rafters. How does this work? Are they cookie cutter for each one of those buildings? Are they all the same? Are those rafters specifically manufactured for that building? How does that work?
I don't understand how that's determined in this appeal.
No, I'm just, I'm curious. I know when you talk about work similar to the other projects.
Sure.
Okay, you say that, you know, work can involve ordering rafters and things like that. I'm saying, is that specific to these buildings, or are they...
The short answer is, it depends on the genetic company or others with whom the operator and the conditional use permit holder will be working. And it can vary depending on their requirements, the style of barn, and who the contractor's going to be. It may be a slightly different rafter based on roots as the trust company that's building it, as opposed to somebody else. But they have to be manufactured by the trust company. I'm not suggesting that Mr. Schenck designed it. So, the decision has to be as to how we're going to comply with the requirements for that particular operation as it's being set up. Then Mr. Schenck would execute on whatever the decision is for that building. So, there's not a great deal, I will admit, of significant design work that's done by the operator, someone like Mr. Schenck. It's all basically, okay, this is going to be the size of the barn, and then it's done through a process where there are options, and you have to select the options.
My specification of rafters on a higher snow load north of Interstate 90. So they were specifically built.
So he will have to review the specifications. In this situation, for those rafters that you were asking about, they are slightly different. They're going to be a little heavier duty.
Okay.
They're going to handle a heavier snow load, because he opted for something that was required north of Interstate 90.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Schenck, I'm going to ask if you will confirm, but I believe it was after the meeting of the tractor parade, that June, that meeting, Mr. McGinnis and you and I stood outside and discussed this, that the possibility to expiration. And I believe at that time, Mr. McGinnis was clear that, because you mentioned that your rafters were currently being built offsite. And I believe he informed us at that time that offsite work is not, does not count towards this permit.
Offsite work didn't count, but we had...
Mr. McGinnis did.
Right.
Because you had brought up your rafters. Yes, because you had brought up your rafters and said, well, I have my rafters being built. And he said, it must be, you know, work on site at that time.
Did he say that? Is that what you asked me?
That's my recollection of that conversation.
We had lots of conversations that night. We talked for, you know, like you and your dad and I used to do, we'd talk four or five hours. But, you know, we talked about a lot of things that night. And, you know, he thought one site was stronger than the other, but he didn't say you're in violation on one site or the other. He thought one was, we got started earlier on, but they're actually flip flops for time periods. One came earlier in the frugal process, and one came later, and they're actually flip flops, and the days actually stretched out the other one.
Right. See, I don't think any of that conversation that night, none of this, this was the very first point when that these may expire had been brought up. Because I think Mr. Gunnerson came to that meeting and brought it up. And again, that kind of stemmed from Mr. Garrity contacting different permit holders, saying that their conditional use was to expire, because they hadn't done any work on that. And that's actually started all of this, this whole thing. And kind of to your effect earlier, Don, regarding, we're just attacking CAPOS and whatnot. And I think Mr. McGinnis said multiple times, I have not contacted anyone, I'm not going after them. These people have come into my office and asked for extensions. And that's what started all of this.
How are we doing for time?
Eleven minutes.
Eleven minutes.
Say, Joe, what puts the county's attorney's position on expiration of CUPs?
That they follow 1725.
That they expire.
Correct. Last conversation, last handful of conversations I've had regarding that. That was the position of the county.
Just so that we do have a record on this, could, I had somebody tell me where it is in section 1725, that conditional use permits are said to expire. And I would ask that the state's attorney verify that, if that's actually his opinion.
Rob, you need a copy?
What meeting was needed to share?
I just read them to you.
What's being... Sorry.
What's being referenced here? And I know Mr. Dunleavy has read it, and maybe Mitch Peterson has read it too. But it said that's section 725, and I know it references a expiration of building permit, conditional use in variances, when it's referencing it. It would have been a change that would have occurred. The first sentence goes on to say, "The building permit shall expire if the work described in any building permit, conditional use or variance has not begun within 180 days from the date of issuance." Since the amendment or the change that's occurred to 725, the county has followed the procedure that the conditional use in variance also expire with the building permit. And that has what's been, the zoning administrator's followed, and that's the same position the county has followed in the past. And that's the position that the county has taken. So that's where the question comes, and it comes up whether it's ambiguous on whether, specifically how it's stated, referencing, and I know Mr. Dunleavy makes the comment too, the title references that they all three expire. And then, reading the first sentence, there's confusion on whether the permit expires along with conditional use in variance based on the date of issuance of the building permit. So the position that the county has taken has been that position, that they all three expire, is what's happened in the past.
Just leave it there, thanks.
So, just to make the final point here, so far, there's been two proceedings today, and one last week. In no proceeding so far has there ever been anyone who said 1725 specifically authorizes a conditional use permit to be deemed expired, and there be a violation based on the language in 1725. Can someone tell me where in 1725, other than this subtitle, that's supposed to be ignored under 2403? Where does it say that the conditional use permit expires? Is there some previous version of this ordinance that we're not privy to, or what's going on? It's a simple question, but it needs to be addressed in this proceeding and made part of the record. Otherwise, we're going to have ambiguity in what you made your decision on and how you made it. And our argument is going to be, the provisions of your ordinance say, you have to make a decision, and you have to make it by affirmative vote on a motion that sets forth your reasons. When you deny it, as you have so far, based on a motion to overturn that doesn't succeed, you don't give reasons for your decision. So, I need to know, so we have a record. If you just tell me what it is, under 1725 specifically, that says a conditional use permit expires, we would appreciate that.
Are we required to give reasons?
What are we at for time?
Seven.
Trying to find the meeting. We discussed that at the planning commission meeting.
Yep, under the 1717, it references in there, "The decision shall be in the form of a motion, clearly stating the board's decision and the reason supporting said decision." And that's under 1717.
And we discussed that at several planning commission meetings on how that's interpreted, and how the county has acted on that historically, and gone through some of the changes. I'm just trying to find that meeting here. Several of the members that were involved with the change to the ordinance are current members on the planning commission, and they, I guess, offered some insight. And...
Planning Commission member Michael stated that that's how they had done it in the past, because the reason for that was they didn't want people to get large numbers of CUPs and sit on them for decades, because they didn't figure that would be fair. So that was his explanation.
Long and short of it, it's always been interpreted that way.
I have a CUP for a wind turbine. It's probably seven, eight years old. Have no intentions of ever building it, and in 30 years, do I have a right to build that wind turbine? So that's the challenge, is I could have 10 neighbors by then, and all of a sudden I put up a 55-foot wind tower in their backyard.
Do you mind if I address that? I mean, the short answer is, that's not this case. But even if it was, you still have to have it in your ordinance. Otherwise, it's not what we would consider to be an authorized determination. In other words, you don't have authority to say that the conditional use permit expires on this appeal, because it's not set forth in your ordinance, nor is it otherwise set forth in the statute. So, what normally happens in the situation that you just described, is that there will be a provision in the ordinance that says that it's been abandoned. And if you don't have language in there, in your ordinance, saying that failure to construct will be considered abandonment, then normally, if you're talking about a more densely populated area, that's likely because there's been a change in the zoning ordinance. If you're talking about wind turbines in an agribusiness, if not, then you'd still probably be able to use that permit, if it would otherwise be acceptable. I would suggest that it's unlikely that you'd ever be able to use that after a long period of time, because normally, that's going to be considered abandoned, and there may be some other situations in which you could argue that your failure to act on that means that the lack of clear intent, like we have here, of constructing and going forward, means that it's been abandoned and waived. So the zoning ordinance could then be enforced.
How much time do we have?
Three minutes.
Mr. Peterson, did you want to weigh in on section 1725?
But I want to be respectful and not jump up and interrupt. Section 1725, in its various forms, has always consistently and historically been applied the same way. Parties can't just sit on their rights. Number two, on the issue of section 2403, that says you can't use the subtitles in informing and interpreting your rules, doesn't say that. It says, "Any person, officer, court, or other tribunal, doesn't get to do that." This board isn't a person, an officer, a court, or an other tribunal. This board is fully entitled to use that, and also to interpret 2403 in terms of what you can do and can't, what you can and can't do. The legislature has given you nearly unchallengeable authority in 2016, under 11-261.1, to do exactly what you're doing today, to make these important decisions and exercise your authority. Additionally, aside from 1725, I would go back and point you to the 2303, that if there's any violation or noncompliance, it triggers any laundry list of provisions in 2303. And the last paragraph allows the zoning administrator to institute any action or proceeding, such as this, to prevent the use of property, to prevent the construction of particular things that are not in compliance with the rules. 2303 gives you the authority to do what you're doing. 1725 does as well. And it's unmistakable, this board has the authority to hold Mr. Schenck accountable and make him follow the rules and act diligently. When he doesn't do it, he's got to start over. It's as simple as that.
Thank you. How much time do we have left?
A minute ten or something.
Any questions for anyone else, while we have a little bit of time? Don, did you have any questions for anyone?
I just wanted to mention again that on June 18th, we had a lengthy discussion about extensions to building permits and CUPs, et cetera. And we outlined a process that if you were in doubt at all to apply to the board for that extension. And 11-2-53, Part Two, was where that is in South Dakota codified law. There was the whole court case. The Hanson County didn't hold the hearing, so they were in the wrong. And that's why we outlined, if you have any doubt, come before the board and ask for an official extension. But we had to hold a hearing, otherwise it wouldn't have been legal.
Can I just address that briefly?
How much time do we have?
We've got five seconds.
I'll give you an extra minute. Go ahead.
Reasonable minds can differ on this, but it's clear that if you say in one section and one hearing that there was a determination that there's no authority in your zoning ordinance to extend any of these permits, which was my understanding, then it would be a futile act for anybody to apply for one of these extensions. If you're talking about renewal, we did try to do that. And furthermore, to suggest that when we did go through a previous process before your June 18th meeting, and asked that we be notified if there was some question, or if there was a problem, or if we had a violation, it's not unusual for a person to rely on that and not firmly come forward and expect that they would have to comply with something that may be unlawful. If those extensions aren't any good, then you're setting yourself up for a trap. You go get the permit, then they're going to say, well, there's no authority for extension, therefore you had no permit, period. We had to keep the permits that we had. I wasn't involved in the case at that point in time, but if I was, I would have said, "Don't you dare do that, Mr. Schenck." So, I appreciate what you did, but I think what he did was appropriate. It's not appropriate to make your determination on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Would entertain a motion. Would entertain a motion. Looking at you, Don.
I'll move to overturn the decision made by Mr. Better on permit.
Close my thing.
8329, 3428.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Healy?
No.
Lost?
No.
Kettering?
Yes.
Clemish?
Motion does not pass. Decision is upheld.
Just one final matter to make sure that we have our record clear. I want to make absolutely certain that everyone understands that what I said before was intended to elicit an actual motion setting forth a decision and the reasons supporting your decision as the statute, or I should say, the ordinance that your state's attorney read, 1717. That's not been done in this case, and so we would ask that you now undertake a process where you would actually come up with a decision on this appeal and set forth your reasons for that in the form of a motion and have that affirmed by a majority vote. And if that's not going to happen, fine, we've made our decision.
Thank you. Rob, what's your advice?
We've stated there the reasons set forth in that 1717. Reasons for the motion, the reasons for the motion.
Can we just put that in, in writing or do we have to actually make a whole nother motion to include that?
I would make the motion in some something. Don kind of has a kind of little list on there that I kind of gave him where it lists some of the positions that we have taken regarding the definition of work. You define how, you're believing that you're defining work. The position that the conditional use, the variance expire under that 1725 regarding building permit. That if there's been more than that, those three. Oh, the request for the extension on, you know, when we have the bomb cyclone and then we shut the roads down. And then the position the county's taken is you had to, you being the building permit holder, had to make an affirmative request of the board, so you would know whether you're in a good position or bad position. Those, those three for sure, like you stated.
I can just note, in this entire proceedings video, you guys have been clear about what you think. And I'm concerned about a trap of what you, right on the spot right now, have to reset every possible reason. And then what if you forget one thing and it's not part of the reason? I think that puts the board in a very unreasonable position.
I agree. I guess I would say based off the finding of fact that the discussions being had.
Based on that.
Can we refer to our video of record?
We can. And when I gave Don the first thing, I said in pursuit of discussions, if you remember that first one that we addressed, because then that would be the decisions that I'm kind of referencing that you addressed. And I know that's what Mitch is referencing also, referencing that, and I know Joe just said it, basically how we reference back to the findings and we talk through those things. And that's really what the motion. Probably make, make a new motion or amend the motion based on the discussions and the decisions made during the hearing and in the prior hearings too, for the rationale for the decision, for being the reason why you made the decision you did.
So, we've made three motions today. Do we need to now go back and make those three motions again?
I would make those three motions again and add, I think the first one, I thought did include discussions during the hearing. That's what I wrote down.
Okay.
And I think Don kind of said it right away, something similar. I don't know if the last two made that distinction, but that's what I wrote for believing they were all going to follow similar, similar motions.
Don, do you remember your second motion? Did you include it?
My second motion?
Not the second one. The first one was with the discussion, but not the second and the third one.
Okay. So.
For the reasons set forth, you know, in the hearing before this course.
Can I amend mine or start it? Just do a new motion?
No, we already voted on it. You can't amend it after.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So, should we start with Don?
Sure.
Rob, can they, can we just do the, like, Mr. Schenk's permits, just number them and make one motion?
You could make them, because we're all intertwining all three elements.
So, just make, on both permits.
Could we just do one motion that covers all, all of them? Would that?
Just the two, because the first motion Don made was correct. It had the discussion in it. The first and the second is Mr. Schenk.
That would be Mr. Johnson's.
Yeah, Mr. Schenk's, just.
I wonder, Rob, if it could just be a motion to clarify the record that the reasons for the prior votes are set forth in the discussion on the board.
I think that would be fine.
Okay. All right. Set forth in discussion of the board. Okay, I, I will try to do this, and if I, please don't second it until it gets approved by wording. I move to clarify the previous motions as based on discussion of the board and findings of fact during the hearing today.
The reasons, I would put in the reasons would be outlined in the hearings, you know, regarding the decisions made for the motion.
Aw, jeez, just a second.
Sorry, Sher, and then me repeating that would be good luck to me too, so.
You want to try that again? And, and so I am going to restate my motion, but I would like you to say that one more time so I can write it down and get it right.
Sorry, Sher, you're writing your motion, sorry.
Well, I, so move to clarify.
Move to clarify the reasons for the decisions on the motions are set forth in the hearing on the merits in discussion here, the discussions during the hearings on the merits.
Should we reference Section 1717?
So, I got it. So, move to clarify the reasons for the decisions on the motions are set forth by the discussions on the merits.
During the hearings. Got yourself into it.
Yeah, I volunteered for this one, didn't I? Okay, so I'm going to restate the motion since there was no second on it. I move to clarify the reasons for the decisions on the motions are set forth by the discussions on the merits during the hearings.
You think that's appropriate?
Second, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Lost?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes. Motion pass. All right. Entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
It's still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, we're back into regular session. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, public comment. You want to time these, three minutes?
They're not on here.
None on?
They're crossed off.
Does anybody care to make a public comment this time? They're crossed off. Mrs. Schenk, Deanna Johnson, Josh Johnson, Megan Schenk, they're, you have names on there, but they're crossed off. Did you guys do that? Okay. Anybody care to make a public comment at this time? All right, seeing or hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you, everybody.